All right, folks, we're going to get going here. I'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission's regular meeting of February 18, 2025. This meeting is being held in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request-to-speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Leonard?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Peak?
Good evening, Rebecca.
Commissioner Riddick?
Vice Chair Hill?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, and let's see, let's have, how about John and Genevieve lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Can you do that? Can you lead us all?
Please, the flag, please.
Come on, tell us how to do it.
One, two, three, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good job. Okay, may I have an approval of the agenda, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda, moving item 4A after item 4B and 4C, and continuing items 4D and 4E to March 3, 2025.
Do I have a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, good. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February 7, 2025.
Okay, now we're on to 1A ceremonial presentations. We have an administration of oath of office to newly appointed commissioners. And first up, we will have Nixon and Jason Riddick will administer the oath of office to Elizabeth Riddick. So go on down to the podium. We can hear you on the microphone down there.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. I, Elizabeth Riddick.
Do I hold my right hand up? I, Elizabeth Riddick.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve as commissioner.
That I will diligently serve as commissioner.
Of the Planning Commission.
Of the Planning Commission.
Of the City of Malibu.
Of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear truth and allegiance.
That I will bear truth and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on up, take your place. If you have a couple of words you'd like to say, great. Otherwise, we do have a pretty full night, it looks like, so welcome aboard and...
I will just say that I'm honored to sit here as a planning commissioner for the City of Malibu. I'm committed to doing the best for our residents and for our community and for the beauty, for the safety, and for the well-being and the preservation of Malibu.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so now we have to re-administer the oath of office to John and myself as we're starting a new term again. So I think Rebecca gets to do the honors?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to nominate Commissioner.
First, we need to administer oath of office to newly appointed commissioners.
Okay.
This isn't for the bars on our uniforms.
Okay. Sorry.
So do we, do we have to go down there, though?
Yeah.
All right, here we go. Can we do it together?
You guys might have this memorized, but here's a sheet, just in case. Could you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, state your name.
I, Craig Hill.
I, John Mazza.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve as planning commissioner or vice chair.
That I will diligently serve as vice chair of the Planning Commission.
Of the City of Malibu.
Of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. It's like hearing yourself on the phone.
Thank you both. Following the meeting, if all three of the newly appointed commissioners would see me to sign the oath of office formally.
Okay, so now we're on to the Planning Commission reorganization, right? So I will accept now first nominations for chair, and then the recording secretary will call each commissioner, and they'll state who they support. So we'll start at this end.
Well, we have to get nominations.
Yeah, we're getting...
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Peak.
I'd like to nominate, oh. Do you have to wait for a second?
No.
I'd like to nominate Craig Hill.
I'd like to continue as chair, so that's my choice. Skylar?
I would like to become the chair.
And Elizabeth.
You know, as I'm just starting, I'm happy to place my vote, but I don't need, do I need to make a nomination?
No.
You are not required to make a nomination.
Then I'll abstain.
Okay. And Chair, would you like me to call the roll?
Please.
Commissioner Leonard? For naming your choice for, your vote for chair.
Commissioner Peak.
Commissioner Mazza?
Vice Chair Hill.
Commissioner Peak?
Peak.
Commissioner Riddick?
I am going to go with Craig Hill.
And Vice Chair Hill?
I'll go with myself.
You have a quorum, so congratulations, Chair Hill.
Thank you, everybody. And then now we need to do the vice chair position. So nominations, let's start at that end this time.
I'm going to nominate Skylar Peak.
I'll accept that.
I'd like to nominate myself.
I'll nominate John.
I'll nominate Skylar.
And Rebecca, can you call the...
Yes. Commissioner Leonard?
Councilmember Peak, I'm sorry, Commissioner Peak?
Commissioner Mazza?
Myself.
Commissioner Peak?
Peak.
Commissioner Riddick?
Peak.
And Chair Hill?
I can't say anything at this point. I'll say John. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Peak, and you do have a quorum. Oh boy, so I think we do another oath of office.
Do we, do we really need to just re-repeating what we just did?
Yes, why don't the two of you do it at once?
What if I stuttered the first time and said it all twice?
Do I get to stay here?
My turn is next. You're going to go repeat this.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Skylar.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve as.
Diligently serve as chair of the Planning Commission. That I will diligently serve as vice chair of the Planning Commission of the City of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
All right, thanks, Detective Johnson.
Skylar, I think.
Okay. Thanks for turning up tonight. We're on to item 2A, written in oral communications from the public. This is for items not on tonight's agenda, and we'll take the in-person people before any Zoom people. We're going to call the speaker slips in order that they appeared. I don't really have those in hand yet. Thank you. And I'd just like to say we do have a lot of people here, and I know that some of you at least are going to be talking on items that will be on Thursday night's agenda on this special meeting. And I would encourage you, just try not to be too redundant. If somebody else has said what you've already said, then we've heard it. And in any case, you should consider coming to Thursday night, too, because a lot more people will hear you then. So with that caveat about the effect of your comments tonight, we will start with Megan Lorik, followed by Genevieve Halakakis? Genevieve? Genevieve? And Arno Koch. And can you come up close to the podium so you can get right up there when we call your name? Okay, welcome.
Thanks. My name is Megan Lorik, and I'm a second-generation Malibu resident. I'm here with my triplets, Jen, Jack, Sophie is sick in the car. I came here after I picked them up from school at Webster. We're currently living in Tarzana because our house burned down. So these are the third-generation Malibu residents. The Palisades and Franklin fires have devastated our community and disrupted our lives. Not only did we lose our home and our dog Penny, but my husband suffered severe lung damage. I want my kids to stay at Webster and grow up in Malibu, but I'm not sure it is going to be a possibility, given what I'm hearing about how the city handles rebuilds. I keep on asking who's in charge of the city, who is responsible for the rebuilds, and I still haven't gotten an answer. Apparently, building in Malibu before the fires was a long and arduous process. Now with hundreds of more homes that need to be rebuilt, it seems like an impossible task. The city needs to hire someone who can be in charge of the rebuilds. They need a background in construction and management, and this person needs a team of people below them to report to them, so there's accountability, common sense, and efficiency. We need experts in rebuilding our lives that were ruined by the sheer incompetence of our state and local officials. We don't need, we don't need to continue to be victimized by inadequate city resources. We have employees that are overwhelmed and do not have the skill set to take on this immense project. It should not take us years to rebuild our homes. By the time the debris is removed, people should be able to start building. We have most likely lost the entire older generation of Malibu residents that lost their homes because of the thought of rebuilding in Malibu is too daunting, and they don't want to spend their remaining years wrestling with the city and its bureaucracy. Let's not also do it to a younger generation. Let our kids come back and be settled. It's hard enough to have to tell them that the government that was supposed to protect them failed them. Let's not continue to fail them. Do the right thing, hire the experts that we need to get this done and get us back into our home. Also, let's make sure this never happens again. We need proper planning and resources. This could have all been preventable. When are our state and city officials going to learn? Was the 1993 fire not enough? The Woolsey fire, and now the Palisades? I don't want my kids to have this happen to them again. So I'm asking you to consider what the rest of the people here are going to say tonight, because now I have to leave and drive all the way back to Tarzana and sit in probably two hours of traffic because of what's happened, and I'd really like to come back to my home in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Commissioners, let's consider whether we have a dozen speakers, several of whom have extra minutes. It's probably 45 minutes of comment, roughly. Do we want to cut that time, allow them the full time? What's your pleasure?
No, we got to let everyone.
We're just asking the question.
Excuse me, the audience must be at the podium to speak, and we have to close the meeting down if we have a bunch of comments in the audience.
I'm sorry, we had the suggestion. I'm simply airing the suggestion.
I was just going to say, everyone needs to say what they need to say.
Yeah.
But I would like to have the decorum honored without the applause, and let's not turn it into, you know, let's keep this thing.
Let's try to run a tight ship here. Okay. Let's try to run a tight ship here. Okay. So with that, we will keep the, I did just ask that. So with that, we've got Genevieve Halakakis? Is that right?
Genevieve Halakakis.
Halakakis?
Yeah.
Yeah. Welcome.
It's okay. I'm going to talk about Penny. Jen just wanted to let everyone know that her dog Penny died in the fire, and she cries every night because Penny is gone. Right? Okay. And that she wants to come back to Malibu, right?
I can get my own room at least.
Yeah, get your own room. Okay, thank you.
Sorry to hear that, Genevieve. So we're going to come up to the podium when we're about to be called. Next will be Arno Koch, followed by Scott Dietrich and Janet Fulk.
Good evening. It was my son's birthday yesterday. He turned six, and when he was about to blow orders canceled, my wife said, "Make a wish," and he said, "I want my house back." And I wish I would make this up right now to make everything sound horrible, but that's what he said. And the biggest fear that I have, and I think a lot of people share with me, is that things are going to take too long. And taking long is not only going to be a matter of inconvenience or money, it will drive people into bankruptcy. Our mortgage lender went ahead and said, "Okay, we can give you three months forbearance," which sounds nice, "but then we have to pay a balloon payment at the end of three months." And every month that the process of rebuilding drags out costs people here $5, $10, $15, or more $1,000. Time is money, and it will drive a lot of people into bankruptcy if it takes too long. And from what I heard after the rebuild, after Woolsey, it is partially in your guys' hands to help us make this process as short as possible. And I can only plead that you guys, in unison, fight for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Arno. Scott and Janet, if you'd come up close so we can keep this moving. And then after Janet will be Peter, oh, I'm sorry, no, Janet, Peter's donating a minute, and I see Peter out there. After her will be Joe Drummond, who also has some donated minutes. Go ahead, Scott.
Good evening, Commissioners. We lost 700 homes. Your schedule is normally packed anyways. We've got a real problem trying to deal with this. Part of it, probably only a small part, falls on you gentlemen and ladies. Somehow, we've got to come together as both a Planning Commission and a city and work together on this. We've got to put past animosities aside. We're mostly talking rebuilding like-for-like. That may or may not come back through this commission. It would be best if it didn't, if it just was on the consent calendar. But we know there's certain things that can be done in the city if we get off our butts, and right now it seems that we're stuck in quicksand. People have proposed having a rebuilding czar. That sounds like a great idea to me. I don't know where you find this person, but you'd think you could get some builder, developer, who knows how to do things. It's only building like-for-like, so we're not talking about a mega mansion where there was once a smaller family house. One of the big problems is cost. A lot of people are underinsured, either because they had the fair plan or they just plainly didn't realize that it's gone to like $850,000 a square foot. So how can we trim cost, not requiring unnecessary things? One is for technical experts, like your geotechnical engineer on your foundation, to be able to self-certify. That eliminates a whole step from staff and potentially from you guys. But I want to talk about something else as well. We lost 700 homes, but there's about 5,000, give or take, left existing homes. We cannot afford to lose more. As of January 6th, the day before the fire, less than 10% of Malibu homes had engaged our fire liaison officers to inspect their homes, to harden it from fires. If you look around, you'll see that the houses that aggressively followed the recommendations of the fire liaison guys hardened their homes, they're still here. We have to address that. We have to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Can you keep it to the end, John? Please, hold it to the end. We've got to get, we were going to get through these people.
Maybe please explain. I just want to explain something to them so they understand that, that, that I just want the audience to understand that.
Commissioner Mazza, Commissioner Mazza, you're not running this meeting, so you're going to have to let the Chair run the meeting, please.
I am trying, I'm trying to.
No, no, it is not your place to do that.
May I ask the audience to please hold applause?
Okay, decorum. Decorum will cost you a lot of time, and that's what you're talking about.
Well, you have a gavel. That's what it's there for. I don't need a gavel. I need a button. Well. Okay. Janet, welcome. And you have, you have Peter on yours, right? And, yeah, Peter's here. I saw him. So you have four minutes.
Four minutes. Our family home in Big Rock burned in the 1993 fire that took so many homes in Malibu. We rebuilt on the same footprint, but with a totally new design plus 10%. We replaced our slab foundation with 24 caissons. We added zero bathrooms. We told our architect and our contractor that while we wanted to design and build a house that was beautiful, it was much more important to build a house that would not burn. We were Malibu City Permit Number 34 of the fire rebuilds for that fire. How long do you think it took for us to get a permit? 30 months? 25? 20? Just under one year. The city was so fabulous, helping us and other people get back into our homes as safely and as soon as possible. The city had our backs, not only in their heads and hearts, but also in their decision-making. Yes, we worked with our geologists to make sure our new design was safe, but we didn't have to spend a fortune on geological testing to get information that was already available, based in the geological records the city and the public already has, based on the 1993 fire, based on years of assessments, starting in 1997 with the Assessment District. The data are already there, and they give the whole picture, which is particularly important since landslides don't seem to respect property boundaries very well. So we know that Malibu can do this. It's just a matter of figuring how, what steps are absolutely needed to get our citizens back in their homes. We share the same goal, and the task force in Big Rock is working hard to find ways to streamline the process. There are so many valuable suggestions being shared with the commission and other city officials that deserve serious consideration. So to summarize our three points. First, we were able to get finished in a really good amount of time in 1994, without cutting any corners or doing anything harmful to the community. And we can do that again, unlike what happened in Woolsey, where it all kind of bogged down in bureaucracy. Second, one example of this is the way that we dealt with geology. Geology is needed to determine what's best to do for our houses and for the community. We didn't have a geologist out there digging holes and doing special ground tests and all that. The information was already there about our property in our area. Our geologists looked at that and made recommendations on the foundation, using all this publicly available data. Third, it really doesn't matter what else you do if you don't make resilience an essential part of rebuilding. If we don't make rebuilds resilient, then we will only recreate this kind of disaster for another 20, 25 years from now. And, oh, our resilient home is still intact today. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next will be Joe Drummond. You have an additional three minutes. If we have Colin Drummond here, I think I saw him, yeah, still here, and Paul Boullet.
I think I have a slideshow.
Is Paul here? And Gretchen Smith? Okay. And after Joe will be, I can't read that, Patella?
Patula, Jimmy.
Patella? Okay. And so please come up close to the podium. Okay, so Joe, you have.
Wasn't there one other one? Sorry. That's the one I want first.
You should have a total of six minutes.
Yeah, that one, the surfboard, thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, thank you very much. I am here with my community behind me. We are going to be here in droves on Thursday about the rebuild codes, but we wanted to plant the seed on what kind of, what kind of changes or fast-tracking we really need as a community. So firstly, we need staffing. We need enough staff to handle 700 applications that will be coming through, and a separate office, which is apparently what the city council has asked for. We would like to identify a task force leader, which I'll go into in a little bit, who will focus on fire rebuilds and be a part of the staff, but also a part of the community. We'd like to identify metrics, milestones, and establish a progress report for every rebuild that comes through. With the PV like-for-like plus 10% planning review, we would, would love to put in the codes a 10-day building and safety review limit. So when it goes into this department, it has to be returned within 10 days for all the agency approvals. We need pre-meetings, if necessary, on-site to allow parallel preparations along with debris removals. Since we, most of us are in Big Rock, we don't plan on making anything larger than 10%. Of course, we would love something for people who have homes less than 2,200 square feet to possibly go up to 2,500 square feet, just as a, as a PV, because their houses are small, so they're not asking for much. If we are able to keep the same fixture counts, which would mean credit for low-flow fixtures, then we shouldn't have any problems with the infiltration into our groundwater. So we should be able to possibly even add a bathroom if we're having low-flow fixtures. With the GO, because we are in Big Rock, we are in a landslide area, and if we are just building on the same plot of land, we are the most studied landslide, I think, in the state. So every year, we have a geological report given by Yay and Associates. And if we're just building basically on the same footprint, we shouldn't have to really do any sort of GO studies. I did notice something in the staff report for Thursday, which I'll go into more then, but there's something that if you replace your foundation, you have to get a separate rebuild development permit. I don't know what that is and what the requirements are, but if you're just building on the same footprint, I don't know why that is required. We're asking for just a soils memo, or like what Scott mentioned, a self-certification of our geologist's report. That will save a lot of time. I know a lot of people had, were bogged down with geology in the rebuilds for Woolsey. We would like to replace topo surveys with lotline surveys, and the heights in Big Rock especially are very low, because we all have, like, most of the houses are 12 to 14 feet. So as long as the codes say from existing height and to come up with a, a plan on how to, how people can calculate their existing heights, there must be a way with a survey or something. No EMP plans. We don't want any electrical, mechanical plumbing plans. Right now, I think for regular houses, it's over 3,000 square feet, but I don't think this should be required, because an inspector can come and check all that out after. Landscape plans, we want phased, predetermined templates vetted with fire and bio already, so that you can just pick a template and go. Fire resiliency, that's very important. We, we want to build our houses with fire-resistant materials. We are coming up with an emergency overlay district to go, to go through city councils, so that we can have special defensible space, materials, special landscaping, so that we are home-hardened. We actually are dealing with the water company and Yay and Associates, our dewatering company, because we want to have like a whole shelter-in-place community, where you can just stay there and the sprinkles will come up from the groundwater and spray our whole community. I mean, it'll be amazing. But we, we haven't been able to rely on the fire department, so we'll have to do that. We hope that the counter hours can be 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, no restriction on building hours. Like, if we can build seven days a week, that would be good, but since there's nobody's in the neighborhood anyway. One of our most important things is we would like a program director for fire rebuilds, who can be a liaison to the city council, the homeowners, city staff, and they can come up with a core team of staff to dedicate to rebuilds, conduct onsite meetings with homeowners and their architectural or engineering teams, and collaborate with homeowners to develop a prioritized list of requirements for swift approvals, form two-member adjudication panels in affected areas to address and resolve specific community concerns, coordinate with various agencies to facilitate expedited approvals and eliminate administrative bottlenecks, leverage legal precedents to support rebuilding efforts, and establish and maintain transparent metrics, milestones, and an active web and social media presence to keep the community informed. And I've just sent you all a petition that over 160 residents has signed, that we'll talk about more on Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Now, I can't read this. Yermi Patula, Patola? Okay, when you're, when I'm calling your name, please come sit right by the podium so we can go quickly. After Yermi will be Charlotte Drummond, and then.
Hello, folks. Thank you. It's Jimmy. Sorry.
Jimmy.
Couldn't read the writing.
And Lea Johnson after that.
But, boy, we're suffering, guys. I just want you to picture this for a second. You know, it's the holidays, Christmas, your tree's still up, got family in town, extended family. You're at work, can't get home because they say there's evacuation. You're at a hotel, you find out your house is gone, all your belongings are gone, you lose a pet, everything. And, you know, you call your insurance, you picture that, and your insurance says you can rebuild. It's going to be tight, as we all know, there's caps. And then you talk to some builders. You talk to four or five builders, they all tell you, you can build your home within eight to 10 months, as long as it's, you know, like 2,500, 3,000 square foot home, can build it in eight to 10 months. So you come to your first city council meeting last week, and all the council members are arguing amongst each other for an hour, and then they tell you that, "We think we can get you in your home in 30 months." And they expect a standing ovation. And you've talked to the experts, they say eight to 10 months, even with permits, 12 to 15 months. And, and then imagine, you know, picture yourself, you know, you're like us, we're in a hotel, four of us, two dogs, and now we got to find a place. You want to keep your kids in Malibu, you want to keep them here in school. So you start to look at the leases, and of course, all the leases in Malibu, because it's 90265, or twice as much as they were pre-fire. That's just how it is. Look into it. They're gouging. And so now, now you got to deal with that. And, you know, people want to help. People do help. They do. But I think everybody knows who's going through this. You're really on. You're really on your own. The end of the day, you're on your own. And, you know, you're, you're trying to figure out what the next step is, and just, you're suffering, you're, you're going through emotions, you're, it's heavy. So I just ask that, you know, picture it. And picture for a moment that it's you folks going through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Charlotte, are you here? Come on, let's get up here. Go, go, go. And after Charlotte is Leah Johnson. Can you come sit up near the podium, please? Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlotte. I'm not going to be at the meeting on Thursday. I live in Hollywood, so I just wanted to say, I've lived in Malibu since I was 12 years old, and the house that burned down is the house I've lived in the longest. And I've moved around a lot my whole life, so it's very hard that it's gone. And I want everyone to be able to have their homes again and, you know, have a proper system to help set them up again. So that's just what I wanted to say.
All right, thank you, Charlotte. Leah? And after Leah will be Abe Roy. Come on up. Go ahead, Leah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Planning Commissioners. Greatly appreciate the privilege of your time and all your help to us fire victims. My house was built in 1955. During the 70 years, it stood there, stood the test of time and all the calamities in between, never had a problem. It was very strong all these decades until the Palisades fires came and burned it down to the ground. We are underinsured with California Fair Plan like many others, and we definitely want to rebuild our home like-for-like. First, we want to scrape the whole thing, and I already opted out, opted in with, with the state for the debris removal, so we're going to have the foundation completely removed and the septic completely removed, and we absolutely want to build. I'm kindly asking all of you to allow our geotechnical engineer to certify our new foundation, which will be very, very strong, without requiring or forcing us to put caissons. If we are forced by the city of Malibu to put caissons on our property when we rebuild, there's no way we can rebuild. That would mean that we will be forced to move out of Malibu because caissons are over $1 million, cost prohibitive, and there's just no money, and there's no way we can rebuild in that case. So we lived in Malibu for 45 years. This, this home, our home, has been in our family for three generations. I worked in Malibu for 40 years. I contribute to Malibu community every single day. And it's an honor and a privilege to live in Malibu and to take care of each other and our community and to contribute to our community, because that's what we're here, to make it more beautiful than it is despite all the calamities that happen to come upon us. So my request is, I beg you to please make it easy for all of us fire victims. We've been through so much and didn't just lost a home, lost everything else, and, you know, many sleepless nights and, and a lot of trauma going on that it's hard to put into words. So I also beg you to help us rebuild, whether you need to streamline or hire additional help, whatever, whatever is needed, please help us. Secondly, I'm, I'm begging you to waive all the permit fees for the fire victims. That would be a huge help for all of us, especially since we are underinsured and the money's very tight right now. Also, I'm in real estate, my business is dead, thank you, because of the fires, thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Abe Roy, please, after that. Wade Major will be the last in-person speaker.
Thank you. Leah was begging. I, I, I don't understand why we need to be begging. We were waiting six weeks for the document to come out that would share what the process would look like, and it finally did. It was a 61-page document. Some of us spent time sifting through it last night and this morning, and sadly, we didn't see anything that was remarkably different than Woolsey. In fact, there are some things that we are a little bit concerned about that may be a little bit regressive. And the whole notion is that Woolsey was okay, it really isn't. 30 months, average time, or, or for the first certificate of occupancy. The question really is, why does it have to be that? Jimmy mentioned that we can put houses up in eight to 10 months, 12 months. Why does it have to be that? We really need to understand it. And since the third day from devastation, we've sort of been shouting at the moon with a bunch of our recommendations, none of which are frankly being taken up or being discussed. We're having some positive conversations, but here we are, three days away from the planning commission vote that is going to look at all of the recommendations, and really none of it has materialized. And, and we simply need to understand why. There is no one more vested in building a home stronger and fire-hardened than the homeowner themselves. So we just need to understand that and appreciate that. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Abe. And last in-person, Wade Major. Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Others are going to get more into the specifics of our asks to fast-track our rebuild process, and they already have, and more on Thursday, or more in two days. While others will get more into those specifics, as we all know, Malibu Cityhood was driven by the goal of local control, most notably control over building codes necessary to preserve our community character and keep big developers at bay. It's this imperative for local control that has been the driving force in all other community battles with outside entities and agencies, including the creation of a Malibu Unified School District, which is finally at hand. What Woolsey unfortunately taught us, however, is that in situations like the present, rigid adherence to those codes and planning processes could have precisely the opposite effect, empowering predatory speculators and risking the loss of the community character we fought so hard to preserve. Speculators are already phoning and texting our Big Rock residents with offers to buy their lots. Just yesterday, I spoke with a Woolsey survivor and former school district parent who finally caved and sold her family's lot after a dispute with a neighbor over the height of her rebuild caused the city to pause her process for over a year so she could prove she was actually rebuilding lower than before. That can't happen again. Many of those who lost their homes are among our oldest residents, voters who gave us our city and its mission and vision statements. Others are among our youngest. More than 10% of our middle school and high school students and their families have lost their homes, fewer than eight weeks before the county committee is expected to authorize creation of a Malibu Unified School District. Our friends in Santa Monica repeatedly emphasize to me how envious they are of our local control. Developers rule Santa Monica because there are too few long-term resident homeowners with a vested interest in the city's future. But if we don't get this right, that could also be our future. In 2018, we had 13,000 residents. We're projected to drop below 10,000 this year. Between Woolsey and Palisades, we've lost over 1,400 homes in just six years, and if we don't act now, we could lose another 3,000 residents by 2030 and cross a tipping point from which there is no return. With BlackRock, Vanguard, and State Street electing and controlling our city council the way they elect and control thousands of corporate boards, residents will become a powerless minority in a community of costly Airbnbs and vacant luxury properties that exist purely as line items on an index funds ledger. On that day, Malibu is lost forever, and the only fix is to fast-track this process faster than either LA City or County who are already moving ahead of us. We need to catch up and lead for the sake of our city, our families, our elderly, and our children. Please, please make this happen.
Thank you, Wade. Parker, how many Zoom commenters do we have?
There's two raised hands. First is Kimberly.
Okay, go ahead, Kimberly.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Louder, please.
Can you hear me?
You're somewhat audible, but if you could speak as loud as you, as you're able to?
Okay, I am speaking louder now. Can you hear me?
That's better, yeah, that's good.
Very good, okay. Yes, my name is Kimberly Carr, and I am a fire survivor from over a decade ago. I have volunteered in firestorms all over the state of California, so I do have quite a perspective on trends and the unique challenges that each location faces. And in fact, I did volunteer here in Malibu during the Woolsey fire for a brief period, but I was spending most of my time actually up in the campfire and lived there for a while. So what I'm doing right now is supporting the PCH Transportation Initiative on request of Halen Conrad, and it occurred to me that the planning commission may be able to give me some assistance and guidance on two key components that, that we're challenged with at the moment. And just to give you an update with regards to the bus service, the public bus service tried to get in today, and they were also turned away at the checkpoint. I have heard that there were a number of people that were first-line, second-line responders that had passes that were turned away today at the rate of about 50%. So it's, it's a bit disheartening to hear that, that even our bus service, who have pre-approval with the OES to assist with evacuations, can't even restart service. I also looked into private shuttles, and we do have an experienced charter service that can engage if we need to do that. That being said, what I'm asking for help with is two pieces. One is, at the Civic Center in Malibu, we need a place where we can have car share and car rental options and e-bikes. And it occurred to me, I know Mr. Silberoff sold the Cross Creek property to Pacific West, but I think that he might be able to assist us in identifying properties, and if he cannot do so, as I understand, he may be now part of the disaster recovery effort. Can you, Planning Commission, please provide me some contacts and guidance for where we might be able to place that, that rental? And then number two is, I know this is less under your purview, but in the city of Santa Monica, if we're going to be unable to drive through this area, but we can take the bus, where can we park our vehicles? I left an email, and I had help with, with Benjamin Marcus. I sent an email last week, no reply from parking, 311 will not help us. Where can we park vehicles in the city of Santa Monica, perhaps overnight, and use the bus to go in and pick up a rental car in the area rather than doing that long commute? We're looking at either at Fifth and Colorado, Ocean and Colorado, or...
Okay, Kimberly, Kimberly, that's your three minutes. Thank you. Last Zoom caller?
Kenneth.
Kenneth?
Mm-hmm.
Can we hear you?
Yes, hopefully you can. This is Ken Shiat. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Hi, Ken.
How are you? I'll be short. I lost my house in '93. I rebuilt. I had 30-plus years in the house before it burned down again. It didn't burn down in the Woolsey fire, but it just burned down. And I echo everything that anyone has said. I simply don't understand why the problems that plague our community, our city council, and the planning commission take so long to be able to come up with a consensus to expedite buildings so those of us who've lost their homes and want to stay in Malibu, I'm 83, I want to rebuild. I've already started the best I can, but they can't even find my plans right now. But we just have to expedite. That's all I really have to say, other than, there's got to be a way to get organization within this city with a competent city council that we have and competent members of this commission to be able to figure it out, whether it's a czar or whether it's just more competent collegiality and cooperation and compromise, we just got to be able to do it. I echo what everyone has said, and I really hope that you guys can put it together. So many people need and want to come back to Malibu, I being one of, I've been here over 50 years. I don't want to have to leave. I don't want to wait three years or four years to come back. I want to get back within a couple of years. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ken. All right. With that, we are going to close the public hearing and bring it back up to the dais here for Commissioner responses and comments. John's got his hand up.
Am I recognized?
You're recognized.
Okay, earlier, I was going to try to explain part of the process so everybody's on the same page. But first, I want you to know that Skyler's lived here his whole life, Craig's lived here his whole life, I've lived here 54 years, Drew's lived here 30 or something, I don't know how long.
So I've been here for 20 years, and I grew up here, Santa Monica, Malibu.
So, so we understand. We've been, I've been through 11 fires. I've lived in one house for 18 years. I fought that, fought a fire to keep that from burning down when both neighbors burned down with my thumb in a hose. The last, the house I'm living in now, at Woolsey, I, I managed to save it with a thumb and a hose, and 11 of my neighbors burned down. So I understand, we understand your situation. I just want you to know that we're not opposed to getting this done as fast as possible. I now have two, five houses on my street being built, so there are complications that come with that, mainly where do you park? But one of the things that you need to do to get, to get yourself in the position where you get it done as quick as possible is to understand the government process involved because it's complicated. Now, the first thing I was trying to explain before is, the planning commission, after next Thursday, will have absolutely nothing to do with your rebuild. If it's a fire rebuild, it's an administrative process, it does not come to the planning commission. So we, what we're going to do Thursday, and this is why we want you to show up Thursday, is the only power we have is to make recommendations to the city council. We can't change anything. They are the ones that have to do it. So we will make recommendations at that meeting. Unfortunately, we've got 48 hours to figure this all out. We got our staff report yesterday, we had this meeting tonight, we had to get ready, and this is what we had to go through. We're doing this tonight. So we have 48 hours. I wish we had longer. I wish we had more than one meeting, because sometimes you take a little bit of time to figure things out right in, in the beginning, it saves you months and months and months in the future.
Commissioner Maslow, would you mind wrapping these up? These aren't appropriate for the Brown Act, this is for Thursday, so I know everyone...
I'm not explaining anything about the process.
You're talking about things that aren't on the agenda, which we, we can't do, and I know everyone's...
Well, then we can't talk about this because it's not on the agenda, can we?
The public can speak about whatever they would like with...
All I have done, just so you know, is I explained how long we lived here, and I explained that they need to know the process of the government.
And that's why I let it, that's why I let it go on...
I did not tell them how the process works, okay?
We, we can make brief responses.
Okay, this is going to be one of your problems, is the city will not let you have an education, so you have to do it yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Who's got a hand up? Anybody? Elizabeth.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Elizabeth Riddick, and I am a newbie here, but what I want to say to the fire victims is that, you know, we hear you, and I hear you. And though we have not been out in front, we've listened, and we are working diligently, I mean, I have been working diligently to hear everything that's proposed, to review the materials that come forth, to work with planning, and to talk with staff to be able to present on Thursday, you know, what we propose doing to help expedite the process better than Woolsey, to have learned from the mistakes, to have enough staff, and to our, do our best to support everybody in getting back in their homes and having our community back. So I just want you to know that. Also, I just want to say to the commission, I, I appreciate everything that everybody has to say, and they're such valuable morsels, and, but what I would like to do, and I'm going to try and say this correctly, is, and Rebecca, you know, you can tell me if this is wrong, but I think I move to bring an item to the next available meeting to discuss the rules of procedure, and I would like to consider moving Commissioner comments and discussion to the end of the agenda. agenda. And the reason I want to do that is because I think it's imperative that when our community comes here with consultants and architects and representatives, and they are paying for their time, that it is our job to get to their agenda items and to get through the agenda. And then when we're done, we can stay till midnight or 1 o'clock or however we want, however long we want to discuss whatever items. So I just moved to discuss that at a meeting, you know, put it on the agenda so we can get to that.
And do I hear a second for that motion?
Do I hear a second for the--
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a second.
And may I also ask, I do apologize, I know emotions are high, but we need to maintain decorum, and part of that is a limit to your reactions in an audible manner, because that can be intimidating to other people who are speaking. And everybody has a right to be heard this evening. Chair, would you like me to call the roll on that motion?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Riddick.
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza.
I'm going to vote no, because I believe that once people make comments, they should get an answer, and they shouldn't have to wait. Sometimes our meetings are five hours.
It's a motion to discuss it, so I--
Oh, it's a motion to put it on the agenda.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. Vice Chair--
I'm happy to discuss it.
Thank you. And Chair Hill?
I'm happy to discuss it, too.
Motion carries.
Okay. Any other hands?
Nope.
Drew.
I want to thank everyone for their comments tonight, and being a Malibu resident, we've all been through these catastrophes, and, you know, I know we're all fed up with the prospect of more coming and how to deal with what's already happened. And in regards to help, as I said at the last meeting, anyone that has any questions, I've been through the rebuilding process twice, and I'm more than happy to share any information that I have to try to help people get on their way. I think we're getting to the point now, we have a staff report, and, you know, I'd like to maybe make a recommendation to staff that in every Planning Commission meeting and every city council meeting, that there be some sort of community update in regards to information to help everyone navigate this path. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Skyler?
I wanted to start out by telling Genevieve that I'm sorry about her dog. This fire definitely changed our community pretty gravely. I made, or Shabon helped make a video that Parker's going to play, just a little more context of kind of what happens after there's a fire and debris flows and the dangers associated with that, and the reason as to why the highway is closed down. There's some music, too, just to kind of lighten the mood.
She gonna make you stay. She gonna make you pay. I thought I told you you should never doubt her. She always gets her way. She always gets her way. 'Cause it's a long way back to where you came from. She make you feel alone. 'Cause that's just what she wants. I thought I told you you could never doubt her. She's gonna get her way. She's gonna get her way with everyone. 'Cause it's a long way back to where you came from. Yeah, baby, it's a long hard fall from the life that you made up.
You can turn it down, I don't care.
And all the glitters and gold at the old rodeo. There's a back door and the last--
So can you kill the noise? Turn the noise off, the music?
Well, you can keep playing the movie. So basically, what I was trying to do with this is to show you guys some of the dangers that happen post-fire.
That was a fail with that music, rubbing it in our face--
Okay, I--
Hey, hey, hey. No comments from the audience, please.
May I please ask for decorum from the audience?
Hey. Hey.
You can leave.
Yeah, one more comment and you're out. I'm sorry, but that's, we've got to keep this tight.
So the importance of that kind of stuff is to show you residents, is it your backup and visiting your homes and things, that when you get evacuation warnings, we don't need anybody else to get hurt from mudslides or other things like has happened in Malibu in the past? And that's the reason for me showing that. I know that that may not sit well with everybody. We're all going to be in a rebuilding process together, but I think it's very important for us as a community to be respectful of that. Next, I wanted to say that it's very difficult when you go and you volunteer your time in this community and you sit up here, and all the darts get thrown at you like they will continue to do over this process. And I really want to thank our staff for working around the clock to try to do what they can to help push this process forward. Hopefully, you as citizens and residents recognize that the process sometimes is complicated. When I was on the city council and the mayor, we tried to do our best with what happened in the Woolsey Fire, and hopefully the existing city council now will do the same thing, and they will improve on what was done before. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Skyler. I didn't want this to be about me at all, but to some of you might care to know that I also lost my house in the fire. 55 years here with the family. Our house was uninsurable for reasons having to do 20 years ago or more with the Big Rock slide. One of the reasons I was going to be stepping down from the commission was I have a few opportunities in front of me, one of which was a project to archive a bunch of decades of audio tapes that are now vapor. I feel it. I'm with you, okay? So it's understandable that everybody's anxious, and part of that is we're getting mixed messages from different agencies. Part of it is, are the structural shortcomings at the city, the leadership structure, and a lot of it is that there's been a lot of focus on the cleanup so far and just sort of figuring that all out. So I think one thing that will help a lot, Bruce has been pushing to have more city council meetings on this. I think that's really important, that the council be with you regularly, and they need to, I think, step up and figure out how to do that. And as it goes, everyone wants to get their word in. Everyone thinks their word is the important word to get in the thing, and everybody has good arguments. I think we do need to allow some time to listen to each other. We should probably have a process that has workshops that council can do and have people come up and roundtables and work out things and make suggestions, and so people can feel like they're airing their ideas into a process. It's not going to work if everybody, everybody just needs to keep coming for three minutes and shouting at us or shouting at the council, right? We need to have a more inclusive process. So there were a lot of specific notes about things that people were suggesting. I want to save those for Thursday night because that's not on the agenda tonight. And a few questions for staff, just by way of more like our normal business. The first one, though, is, do you have any updates about what's happening on Thursday? Any new information or anything to share with the public about what to expect Thursday?
Yes, good evening. I believe it's a consideration of the pending LCPA and so text amendment to streamline certain issues related to the fire rebuild efforts.
Right. And maybe one of the things to be cognizant of is, some of the things people want are going to be substantive in terms of the code and what you can do, and some of your concerns are about process and how we get there and how, who's going to do it. I think it's important to think about that because some of the code stuff is going to be hard. The fire department's going to be hard. But there are things that the city can do to streamline us and get us there. Quick comment.
So I just want also that if we don't figure out a way, like, you guys also, like, bring forth ideas on Thursday, you know, like, come to that meeting and, you know, go to your council. I would encourage you to do that based on what I was heard this evening. We must trust science and build all of these back safer than they were ever built before.
John, quick?
Yeah, one of the speakers mentioned gouging. And gouging is illegal in Malibu. If you are ever run into gouging, if somebody's going, I think it's 10% more in rent, call our city attorney, Trevor Rusin, and he will follow up and prosecute.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, I forgot to mention that. Someone also mentioned about unsolicited offers for their land. That is against the law right now. And what I would suggest you do is get that further information from them, who they are, report it to the city attorney. Is that right, Kellen?
Yes. We don't prosecute here. That's the district attorney's role.
You guys will forward it to the district attorney.
Correct. We have an open line with the DA's office and the department that handles all of these issues.
Yeah. So find out who they are, get their contact information. They're breaking the law.
Thank you. Thank you. Another couple of questions for staff. Do we have any news on the apparent debate between EPA needing to test soils versus the Corps of Engineers saying we can just scrape six inches off and be done with it? Where do we stand with that?
I'm not aware of anything new. Tyler, I don't know if there's any--
No, there isn't any new information related to that.
Nothing new there yet. Any news on PCH opening? We just heard something about buses and 50% of people getting through and not. Any solid information on that for the people?
That is true. Several folks have been turned away. I did check with the Public Works Director today, and he told me that the closure is indefinite. So, you know--
We're talking about to Santa Monica now.
Yes, correct.
But some people are getting through.
Correct.
Please.
I mean--
I think it's very important for the public to understand what the word slippage means. When the state engineers use the word slippage, that means that the highway is failing, and that means that it's likely going to be closed for a very long time.
And some bureaucratic slippage, I'd say, too. Yeah, John?
The person that asked about parking and transportation, the MTA partially funded the parks we bought for $42 million, about six, five years ago or so. There are provisions in those things for public parking. So you can contact the city and realize that zoning is important, and also, we have a huge amount of commercial that's for rent now. There's a reason to have rental cars. I'm sure some rental company will come in here if there is a demand.
Okay. So no clarity yet on how PCH is open, for who, for how long? People, get city council to be meeting together and getting the answers to these things. Final question for staff. Do we have any news from Caltrans about how they plan to handle the future of PCH?
Yes, I also asked that question just in general, and it sounds like Caltrans is doing a master plan for PCH, and a stakeholder meeting is scheduled to be happening sometime soon, maybe the next month or so.
Well, this is, so they've been doing a master plan for a while, so I guess the question is, how do the new circumstances affect that in any way?
I would assume it would include the current status of PCH.
But no specific details at this point?
Not, no, no, there should have details.
That's a big orange elephant in the room. We need to keep moving with our agenda here. Are there any final comments, or can we move forward? Okay. Oh, Rebecca.
A very minor housekeeping issue. The resolutions that might be adopted this evening will be updated to reflect the name of the current chair.
Okay, thank you. Quick, important from Skyler--
Okay, so I just, just for the public, this is something, not to get, like, religious or anything, but like, that the church put out, Malibu Pacific. It's awesome. It's for people to shop locally. Basically, what they did is come up with a bunch of all the local restaurants and businesses and kind of did like a bingo checkoff list, like, within their own thing. So I just want to really put it out there, how much our local businesses need people to come here and shop here and enjoy dinner here and other things more than ever.
We can't get here, everybody lives here.
Okay, folks. But folks, we're--
Yeah.
John, quick, quick--
A quick comment on that. The Pacific, as far as I'm concerned, the Pacific Coast Highway has been shut down going south and shut off quite a few businesses that are unnecessarily shut down. And I hope Caltrans can move that farther south to save four or five businesses that are dying. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move item 3B1, approval of minutes.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Oh, I thought we got it.
Staff comments, please. Please enlighten us, please.
Just a few, just a few. First, I want to welcome Commissioner Riddick to the Planning Commission. We look forward to your continued, your thoughtful engagement moving forward. And I also like to report that the Planning Council has fully reopened to the public, the Planning Council and the Development Portal, and we are accepting applications for fire rebuilds as well as those general planning development applications. We are thrilled to add three additional planners to the Planning Department team. We've recently hired a planning technician, an assistant planner, and a senior planner to the Planning Department family. In addition to those two city staff, we also have two consulting planners that will be augmenting the work that the fire rebuild team needs support with. What else do I have here? There is a special Planning Commission meeting in a couple of days to consider the draft LCP amendment and zone text amendments related to the fire rebuild efforts. And there is also a presentation that is scheduled for the city council, and this is to provide an overview of the fire rebuild process. That presentation is tentatively scheduled for February 24th. And lastly, there is also a debris removal right-of-entry workshop that is being facilitated. I believe it was already scheduled, and it's being rescheduled, and that will be, that's a date to be determined. To receive updates related to the fire rebuilds, we invite you to subscribe to the updates, which can be reached at malibu-city.org/rebuildupdates.
Okay, thank you. Hey, everybody out there making noise in the lobby, can we turn it down a few notches, please? Yeah. And you might want to know that on February 26th, there will be a town hall about the cleanup from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. here at City Hall. So thank you for that, staff. And Rebecca, I just noticed that the agenda I have in front of me is Thursday's. I don't have a copy of the, so, but I think we're on to, now we're on to--
Yeah, I'd like to move 3B1, approval of minutes.
Right?
I'll second that, but I don't think that Elizabeth can vote on that.
No. See, Elizabeth, you recuse on that because you obviously--
Whether people were present in the Planning Commission or not, they do have the ability to vote on whether or not they wish to approve the minutes based on not being aware of a substantive error in them, but it's up to you guys.
Okay, Skyler stands corrected, so.
I'll move to approve the minutes, if that's what I'm supposed to say.
Okay. Consensus, or do you need a vote?
You can do this by consensus.
Consensus?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great, thank you.
So carry.
All right. And now we're on to 4B, correct?
Correct.
Because we're putting 4A at the end. All right. So I think I see Mr. Tyler Eaton here getting ready for a staff report.
Actually, Rick Caswell is going to be the case planner. I'm just here to support. And then I was just making sure the applicant is aware his item got moved.
We're going to take a break before this one?
Johnson, your item's up, just to let you know. All right.
Is that what I'm hearing? Is that what I'm hearing? Can we take a real quick one? Let's call it 7:55. Don't talk to any of us up here. Just treat us like we have cooties. Thank you. We already do that. Behind, we need to get a quorum of commissioners up here.
I'll look for Skylar. Okay.
Tyler, are you going to want to read the whole description yourself? Would you like me to?
So, yeah, so Rick Caswell is the planner. Yeah, I'm just here for support.
Okay. And Rick, are you here with us?
Yes, I am here as a voice, if you can hear.
Okay. Hopefully, you can be a little bit louder, either through your own vocal cords or somebody can turn you up here. We're not open yet. I know.
Is this any better right now?
It's still pretty quiet.
Could I ask that we wait for his presentation until Skylar's here, so everybody has.
Yeah, we are. This, we're all just, we're just, this is, I don't know what we call it, interim discussion. Getting ready. Okay, we've got Commissioner Peak on the stand. We've got a quorum. Rick, how'd you like to give us a staff report? We're back in the meeting.
Fantastic. Can everybody hear me okay right now?
It's a little quiet, but if you can speak up, I think we'll do all right.
Okay, yeah, I'll try my best here. Well, good evening, and thank you for having me. Just getting things situated here. Okay, I believe there should be a PowerPoint that's showing on your end. I'm not seeing that from mine.
We're seeing an initial slide.
Okay, okay, then I'll work with the PowerPoint that I have in my end. So the item I'll be presenting tonight is Coastal Development Permit number 21-042, with variance numbers 21-016 and 24-016. In addition, there is a Site Plan Review Permit 21-028. The subject property is 3868 Porco Canyon Road, and the applicant has an application for construction of a new two-story, single-family residence with basement and subterranean garage, swimming pool and spa, onsite wastewater treatment system, and associated development. As mentioned above, it includes a variance. This is for fuel modification and development encroachment into environmentally sensitive habitat areas and associated buffers, variance for setback reductions to both the rear and south side yard, and in addition, a site plan review for construction above 18 feet. If I could have the next slide, please. So just a quick look here at the overall location of the property. We can see here that it's located about a half mile away from Pepperdine University and is located just at the eastern edge there of Porco Canyon, right above Commercial Wichita Butts Pacific Coast Highway there at the south. If I could have the next slide, please. So look at the existing site conditions. Basically, the subject property is currently vacant. There are remnants of development associated with 3870 Porco Canyon, which is the parcel to the east. Essentially, this property here to the west has been used as a driveway motor court associated with 3870, which is the next project that we will get to. There was a house previously located on that, which was unfortunately burned down as part of the Woolsey fire. If I could have the next slide, please. So as mentioned, the application is for construction of a 4,549 square foot single-family residence with approximately 2,500 square foot basement and subterranean garage. The total development square footage is 5,332. As mentioned, there's various associated development with that, which is before you on the slide there. I don't need to read all of that for you. I will add, though, that there is the additional proposal to remove two protected oak trees, potentially three, which we'll discuss in a couple of slides' time. If I could have the next slide, please. So a quick overview of the discretionary requests. As mentioned, there's a couple of variances associated with this. One is setback reductions to both the rear and south side yards, a development encroachment into Esha is associated with the proposed development, including fuel modification there. That's the other variance. And then the site plan review for the pitch roof up to 27 feet, 11. Yes, yes, sorry. Blanking that because we have two projects side by side. I just wanted to make sure that I had the right one here. If I could go on to the next slide, please. So a quick overview of the slope analysis. This shows us essentially the building pad that we're working with, or that the applicant is working with here. You can see the steep slopes above the building pad there, shown in the various shades of maroon, purple. So you can see the proposed building outline there towards the south of the property, Wichita Butts Privet Road, which is a private driveway, providing access to three properties from Porco Canyon Road there at the east. So essentially, it's a very narrow, buildable area that the applicant is working with here, given those steep slopes, which are effectively prohibited by the LIP for development within. If I can have the next slide, please. Thank you. So as mentioned, there are two setback reductions proposed here. There would be a 50% reduction to the south side yard there, and then a 42% reduction to the east side yard. In this case, the front yard there is being proposed off of Porco Canyon there at the west. If I can have the next slide. Overview here of the development area. So per LIP Section 4.7.1, Esha is, because of Esha on the property, the applicant is limited to a 10,000 square foot development area. Next slide, please. And when we look at the Esha here, we can see before us, so there's several classifications of Esha. There's two types of woodland Esha in the form of coastal live oak and California walnut. They're shown in the burgundy color, in addition to California walnut and Laurel sumac woodland, shown in the green shaded areas there, as well as several oak trees, protected oak trees, which are either located on the property or immediately adjacent, in which their protected zones overlap the property there. You can also see the overall disturbed area boundary or the development area, shown in the orange hatch there. Finally, as well as a blue line stream, which is shown there at the north, the top of the slide, or the top of the image in the slide there. And so that basically has a 100-foot Esha buffer associated with that, just as the other Esha classifications also have. Next slide, please. So as part of staff visit to the site, there has been added a condition, condition number 42, with the proposed resolution, should the Planning Commission decide to approve the project. Ultimately, it would be subject to an arborist evaluation of tree 22. The staff visit noted that essentially one of those trees, tree number 22, which previously showed up on the plans as not encroaching within the proposed development there, is now encroaching. That's as a result of the application being approximately almost four years old at this point, so there has been some tree growth there. So just to note that that condition has been added, that a certified arborist shall review the proposed encroachment and essentially provide a recommendation on what appropriate mitigation measures would be needed in accordance with LIP Section 5.5. If I could have the next slide. Overview of the site plan here, just pointing out where the proposed two-car garage subterranean will be located there. That's at the southeast corner of the proposed building. And you can see here highlighted two unenclosed parking spaces at the west of the building pad area. Next slide, please. Just providing here floor plans. We can see an overview of the basement here with subterranean garage there, shown at the right here. Next slide, please. First floor plan, again, providing these as reference points if you need to go back to them. Next slide, please. For the upper floor, you can see there's an associated outdoor deck area here on both the east and west sides of the building. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And a look at the roof plan. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview again of the elevations here. I know everyone on the planning commission has seen these elevations, but again, it's really for the audience's benefit here. We have the south front elevation here. You can see the subterranean garage there at the bottom of that image. And then the north, the rear of the building. It's a pitched roof here, which we can see in the next slide. So there's elements of pitched roof, which go up to approximately 27 feet and 10 inches, I believe, or 11 inches, which we'll see in the next slide, which we'll say section there. Thank you, and next slide, please. So, this just gives us an overview of the landscape plan and oak tree restoration. Obviously, we mentioned that as part of the proposed development, there is going to be removal of two oak trees, potentially three. This is essentially presenting to us the location of 20 oak trees. It's a case of replacing one tree. When one tree is removed, 10 are replaced. So we know for sure that there will be two trees to be removed, potentially three, again, to be determined by the arborist should the planning commission move forward with an approval. Next slide, please. Looking here at the fuel modification. This obviously shows you the three different zones there that extend out 200 feet within the property boundaries there. Obviously, with there being ESHA on the property, this fuel modification, no matter how development would be proposed there, would encroach within that onsite ESHA. Next slide, please. So an overview of the grading. It meets everything with regard to the code. It's under the 1,000 cubic yards of non-exempt grading. The applicant is proposing a little under 250 cubic yards in total. There has been no previous grading per the LPC. So cumulatively, they remain there at just under 250 cubic yards. Next slide, please. In terms of public correspondence. So I did receive a phone call from a neighbor of the property here, the neighbor residing or certainly working at 25001 PCH. There were general questions and concerns, if you will, just regarding fire access for fuel modification, which I believe were clarified up when I spoke about the project plans with the resident. Additionally, concerns about runoff and drainage impacts to the property south there, 25001 PCH. Obviously, the potential for drainage there to seep down was a concern, just given previous rain events. Additionally, there have been emails received from the neighbor at 3874 Puerto Canyon Road. The concerns were regarding private road access. This mainly was a fire department access concern. Essentially, the desire of that resident was for the applicant to consider relocating the existing retaining wall there along the shared driveway to allow for two-way access. And again, this is relative to previous events where private road has, that particular resident has encountered cars, service vehicles and suchlike being parked along there and ultimately blocking access there, which was a concern. Associated dirt from construction, building setbacks, variances, grading and excavation, all related to natural hazards concerns. Really, just a general note to the city and a request that the project be reviewed for full compliance with all of the regulations, which they have been, given the approvals of the various internal departments as well as outside agencies in the form of WD-29 and the fire department. OWTS, this particular resident had experienced, I guess, issues, if you will, with a previous home that was ownerless property. And so their desire was ultimately for the OWTS to be designed for the highest capacity and safety and performance standards. Finally, building materials and landscaping, to have that, to be, to have all of those built to the highest and best fire department standards. In addition to concerns about repairs to Puerto Canyon Road, this is really directed to the city and not the applicant. There are obviously concerns from this resident regarding drainage, cracking potholes and so forth, and how any construction vehicles may worsen that. This is also echoed by another resident who I believe resides in the vicinity of this project, although an address wasn't provided for that resident. Again, the overall potential for the proposed development's construction vehicles and how that may impact the surrounding roads, notably Puerto Canyon Road, in addition to stability and drainage. And also, I believe there was a potential concern from this particular resident regarding the size of the proposed home relative to the previous development at 3870. So, next slide, please. The summary of staff here is ultimately for the planning commissioners to provide direction for staff to bring back a resolution consistent with the planning commission's decision. Or the planning commission may consider the draft resolution attached to the staff report, Resolution Number 25-36, approving the project as conditioned. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions you may have. Also, just noting that the applicant team has prepared a PowerPoint, which I believe they have ready to go after this, unless there's immediate questions for me.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Before we get to the public portion of this, we need to do disclosures. Why don't we go down the line, Skylar?
I met the client and the architect today. I think that it was really important to see the topography and the trees that are potentially being impacted here. And what I learned from looking at it is that where the house sits would definitely be in a very high severity fire danger area based on the slope and topography of how a fire would approach it from northeast, I guess, or I would say over the north.
I visited the site last Wednesday with the applicant team. It happened to overlap with Commissioner Mazza at the time. I noticed that the story poles are set back five feet from the edge of approximately one-to-one slope. I think they've measured it as something less than that, but it sure looked like one-to-one there. And so it's not quite as dramatic, but it reminded me of the narrow setback from the steep slope that we had on Noranda Lane a couple of years ago, at the top of a slope presenting, as Skylar said, an unusual fire risk situation. John? Oh, I'm sorry, one more. I'm sorry. Regarding the neighbor who wrote to us about the failing public road, I asked Rob DeBeau if he could provide any clarification on that. And he gave me a comment that I can read into the record on what's going on with the road. Quote, "Next fiscal year, we have that section of Puerto Canyon Road designed to be resurfaced. Since we are delaying Big Rock and Tuning Canyon Road resurfacing, we could add this section of Puerto Canyon Road to this year's resurfacing project. I haven't finalized the revised plan, but I don't see why we can't add that section this spring/summer. We typically have our paving projects in construction in late spring or early summer. We are hopeful that we can keep to that schedule, but we will see how it goes."
Okay, as Craig mentioned, I met with the architect and the owner and Craig on the property. I noticed it's very, very obvious that is, I would say, an extreme, extreme, extreme fires danger zone. And I don't know what good it would do to resurface if they're going to drive trucks on it the next year, but okay. That's it.
I went by the site today. Commissioner Peak happened to be there and overlapped with me and met with Mr. Sorenson and the applicant and took a look at both the parcels.
Yes, I too did a site visit with Jensen and his architect. And I thoroughly walked the property and looked at the oak trees and the ESHA and really appreciated the deep dive and discussion. Thanks.
All right. Any quick questions for staff or can we hear from the applicant?
Quick question.
Let's be quick.
Rick, why was the front yard setback determined to be Puerto instead of Privet Road? Since the houses are located on Privet Road.
So there's a definition of the front yard setback. And essentially, when a property abuts a public street, a public road, the front yard setback is measured from there. And so in this case, obviously, this particular lot here at the west of Privet Road is immediately abutting Puerto Canyon Road. It does have that ability to take the front yard setback from Puerto Canyon.
So, follow-up, the 4C, the setback is from Privet?
Correct, yeah. The setback is from Privet, yeah, given that there is no public street there to take the front yard setback from. It has to be taken from somewhere where there is immediate access.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We can hear from the applicant team. You have 15 minutes, of which you can reserve any amount to rebut. We do have two public speakers live in person. And Parker, do we have any Zoom callers on this one?
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay, well, we'll allow them another minute. But go ahead, applicant team. If you've got your 15 minutes and you can reserve some for rebuttal. You want to tell us how much you want to reserve or?
We have to decide that right now or can we just?
Not necessarily, but.
I'll try to make it short and sweet, but we would like to reserve some time.
The question would be, do you want to be noticed when a certain time comes?
No, I'll just take a look at it here, if you don't mind. I'll try to be as fast as I can.
My name is Jensen Turner. I'm the owner of the properties. I appreciate that you guys came out to visit those. I came here to speak just because I've been intimately involved in the properties from the get-go. It's been about five years since we started the process and it's been a challenging five years, to say the least. I wanted to kind of give just a quick background because I know Chris will go into the granular details. But I know often it can be misconstrued on whomever is the owner or what their intentions or building are. Myself, I'm first generation Malibu. I grew up in Woodland Hills. I live in Malibu in Malibu Country Estates. My wife and I, we met at Pepperdine. Our kids go to school in Malibu. We're deep lovers of Malibu and our intention is to be here, God willing, the rest of our life. So I just wanted to give kind of that context because it's something that I'm passionate about. It's something that I've, I hope that we've designed beautiful properties that you guys appreciate. I feel that we've done everything that the planning department has asked of us. You know, within that five years, I've obviously had a lot of requests and we've truly abided by all of those. Even in the last minute, certain things that they requested, we eliminated as well. So I just wanted to give that context and Chris will give more granular details. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christopher Sorenson, architect. I've been working out in Malibu for almost 30 years now. I'm a LEED-certified architect. I speak and lecture at UCLA on sustainability. And there's about nine fires I've been designing homes in Malibu. So every fire, I get more conscious and understanding about fire resiliency and how to design to those measures. Jensen hired us, yeah, about five years ago to design homes on these lots. And again, I want to appreciate everyone coming out and speaking to us within last week about the house. I think it's really important to see the sites and to understand the topography. So without, you know, Rick had already kind of presented the houses, so I won't spend any time on that. But can you go to the first slide? Oh, perfect. So this is the design that we're proposing. I think I'm just going to focus on the three measures that we're asking for you planning commissioners to vote on. As Rick mentioned, one of the, the site plan review is to go beyond 18 foot, as everyone knows. And the whole point of 18 foot, that is by right. Beyond that, to the 2711 that we're proposing is by discretion for you to vote on. And that is to make sure that no one's ocean view is blocked. And also, I guess, one of the things is to make sure no ridgelines are being obscured. So from PCH, the mountains behind, this is right up front. So you don't see from PCH, you can see the ridgeline behind, which was done in a study that we did for Rick. And then for this one, there's no one that, our client, you see, owns the property all the way to the back. And of course, the parkland is all the way in the far back. So no one will ever, no one lives there. No one will ever be able to build there. There are a few neighbors, there's one neighbor to the right. And then there's a few neighbors up the hill on Puerto to the left, to the far left. The view studies, as part of the staff report, has shown that this does not impact anyone's ocean view. So to that point, I would kindly ask that staff would approve the site plan portion of it, which is to go to the 28 feet. I'll address the variances. The variance, the variances that Rick is discussing. One is for the fuel modification. So any house, even a small little doghouse, would need to have a variance due to fuel modification, which is 200 feet. So anything that were to be approved on this lot would require a variance due to the proximity to the ESHA. We are 100 foot outside of the ESHA, so we meet that. But in the LIP, as everyone knows, fuel modification to mitigate against the fires is considered development in LIP. Therefore, we require a variance to build anything on that site, whether it's this size or any size. The other variance, of course, Rick mentioned, was the oak trees. He mentioned three oak trees. One oak tree was heavily mitigated. We did several revisions. There was a pool in the way. So we pulled the pool all the way back out of the TPZ, which is, the TPZ is the tree protective zone, which is five foot beyond the drip line. And then, of course, that corner of the building, right here, there's a little retaining wall to go down into the subterranean. The oak tree is right here. We are basically right at the drip line. So the reason Rick was measuring us, and Rick has been very diligent in being very critical of the code, to the point that we've, I think, gone back and forth seven different times with Rick. And prior to that, Philip was our planner for a year and a half. So hence, part of the time. And of course, Richard Mulcahy was helping us through this and he's left. So, but this oak tree that was right there, it's the retaining wall to go down to the subterranean garage. So that's, hence why Rick put the condition in that he wants an arborist to look at that third oak tree. The other two oak trees, the one oak tree is smack dab in the middle of the site. There was absolutely nothing we could do. We could not, unfortunately, we cannot build a house on this lot if that oak tree wasn't moved. We would personally like to move the oak tree, but there's no provision in the code that allows that. So therefore, that oak tree has to be replaced and we're going to replace it with 10 oak trees. They're minimum five gallons, I'm sorry, 15 gallons each, one inch diameter. And that's the minimum requirement. But so those were listed in the plan that Rick showed, how we're planting them around the site. And that was part of what the ERB had also recommended. They wanted to scatter them out a little bit different than we had originally proposed. So we took those considerations into our plan. There is the second oak tree in the back we were planning on holding on to. We actually, if you noticed, in the subterranean, we staggered and stepped the foundation in of the subterranean to protect the oak tree. However, because the LIP is so strict and it goes for the five-foot drip line, the five-foot buffer zone beyond the drip line, we could not meet that requirement. So therefore, the code doesn't allow us to potentially keep it, even though we're going to and we believe it's going to live. to, and we believe it's going to live, because we've talked to our arborist and our biology, biologist on it. The code doesn't allow it. So again, that's hence the variance to remove the trees and in lieu of that, we're planting the 20 trees. The reduction in setbacks, as you saw, it's a, it's a very large lot. It's almost two acres. It runs very deep. So as everyone knows how the setbacks are established, they're not typically four or five foot as they are in most jurisdictions. In Malibu, of course, to create as much land around the properties as possible, it's a percentage. So the, the, the front yard and rear yard and side yards are all measured based on a percentage. It's a very long, deep lot. And as you see, we don't have the luxury of building on most of the lot. We just, we built on the flattest portion, so very minimum grading. And so we have very large setback requirements. That's why we ask, we're asking for reductions in setbacks to build in this, the only flat area of the project, outside of that escha area. So also, I want to show a couple more slides. We did a little study, of course, as I said, the variance for the fuel mountain escha, basically if, that variance has to happen or else nothing can be built there. Regarding the oak trees, if we were to abide by the oak tree and leave the oak tree in place, this little red piece is the, I think it's 81 square foot of, I believe if I'm quoting that correctly. It's a very small slice. It's not even, it's not even enough for a two-car garage. So if we were to build by the code, outside of the fuel modification variance, if we were to leave the oak trees, that's what we'd be allowed to build on the site. So, so with that being said, I think I'll leave the remaining, that addresses all the asks that we're asking the commission to consider in our approval. So we really appreciate your consideration and thank you for all the time that you've put in. And I'll use the rest of my time for rebuttal if there is any.
Okay, thank you. So now we have two comments.
You'll have five minutes and 37 seconds remaining for rebuttal.
Thank you, Rebecca. So we have two comments here. Julie Hoffman followed by Elena Sidkowetsky. Yeah, you get to do your rebuttal afterwards, so.
And then Chris, if I could ask you to take a seat.
Yeah. Come on up to the, to the microphone.
Hi, John, hi. Thank you all for all of your time. They were such heartbreaking stories here today. I'm sorry about your house. So I, I have lived on Puercos Canyon for 30 years. And five of my neighbors have lived there for between 25 and 30 years. And we had an HOA meeting this week. So I'm speaking on behalf of the HOA and on my, on behalf of myself. And we wanted to look at the big picture. Amare Bush and Des Coyle lived in a house that was probably 2,000 square feet on this land and that existed along with the oak tree that they're going to remove. And we would love to have new neighbors. We welcome having more neighbors. But I'm concerned, everyone on, in our HOA is concerned about the ingress and egress. It is not a matter of, Rob has, you know, put these Band-Aids on the street and been very gracious about that. It's not a matter of resurfacing the street. If you were to drive into Cosentino's Nursery and look at their back hill, it is, there's slippage and it is a landslide waiting to happen. So there, it's, there's just a few little pine trees that are basically holding up Puercos Canyon. And then they dump their peat moss there when they open up the gate and they have a peat moss delivery. And that's basically what's holding up Puercos. You need to look at the underbelly of it. So I love that mountain. I know it inside and out. And I've lived through every fire. And the fire comes tearing up through the Burge architects, straight up through this property. And Puercos is a funnel fire canyon. And that's why the MRCA wasn't able to put their entertainment center and the home for the handicapped children up in Puercos, because it's crumbling. So I'm just concerned that you go from a 2,000 square foot house and you put what is 11,000 square feet when you put two houses on there with the pool, et cetera. Can the mountain hold that? And then there's another house that is coming to the planning commission soon too, that's also on Puercos. So can all of that weight, on top of what Reggie and Ryan have just built, you know, can the mountain handle all that? It's a crumbling canyon. And I just want to look at the underbelly. So I'm looking at the, the big picture. That when we first got to know Puercos, they said that there's sediment in the ocean that shows it seriously burns every five to seven years. So, and that is direct in, in the line of it. So, you know, and the walnut trees are holding up Puercos. If you walk past their lot and keep going up towards the pig farm.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. And next we have Elena Sidkowetsky.
Good night, commissioners. My name is Zelina Sidkowetsky. I've been living on Puercos Canyon Road for 15 years. This is my primary residence. I have children. I have, I'm an active part of the community. And I've been through two fires on Puercos Canyon Road. And as my neighbor just said, it's a funnel with the huge force driving fire right in our faces. And my house is only a few feet away from the applicant's. And I really love the pictures of the architectural presentation. However, as you visited the, this little caldeza, you had the chance to see how overgrown the property is. There are not two, three or five, there's tons of, dozens of developed oak trees. And I'm just wondering, you know, I'm, I'm so, I'm so emotional about this project is because you have to understand, there are two big houses proposed on the lot, a very steep, a very grading lot, where it used to be one small ranch home that burned to the ground. So whatever is going to be built there is of big concern for me because the project, the proposed project is maximizing the building area and I understand why and I respect that. However, it's minimizing every offset, every setback, every fire distance. So I don't know where there will be one oak tree substituted with 10 more, because at this point, it's a matter of eliminating because it's so overgrown already. Also, on the pictures, it was a beautiful house with vast, it looked like a vast side, you know, on each side, there was a lot of space. However, it's a stiff hill and the narrow easement is designed in the 50s. It's not designed to hold, to, to extra households. My children, my child has, has health conditions. So it's blocked every time. So if the applicant is building yet another income property where it used to be one, I pledge you that you make him, change the infrastructure. The easement is too narrow. It's a narrow trap and I'm at the very back of it.
Okay, thank you, Elena.
So we cannot, we cannot have it as is. Thank you for understanding.
Thank you. No, no online Zoom, right? Okay, great. Would you like to rebut? You've got the five minutes and 37 seconds remaining.
Real quick, turn it your phone. Okay, tell me when I'm ready to go.
Anytime you'd like.
Okay. Thank you so much for bringing up the two, those, all those concerns. I think those are all legitimate concerns and I want to address them. Maybe I'll just start with, the main concern I heard with you was structuring and the concern about Puercos, the public road potentially not being able to hold the weight. Both these houses are on deepened fortified foundations. This house in specific, that you're talking about is?
Say, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. So the house, because we're just talking about the house itself. I mean, Puercos is a public road, so we have no, you know, jurisdiction over that. But the actual, what? But the house, the basement itself is going 13 foot deep, structuring down into bedrock. So I can assure you, actually, after the house is in there, it's going to actually stabilize and fortify this lot. And I can't speak to Puercos Road specifically, but the house itself is, the foundation is very well designed and it's going to be extremely stable and add to the strength of that area. Regarding the oak trees and fire, very legitimate concern. I also want to, John Maza and Craig Hill, you also brought up a good point. I do want to say, I know you guys keep on saying it's a one-to-one slope. It is actually a three to one, two and a half to one. There's a couple areas that you had pointed out that were steep, but I'd be happy to take a square triangle and show you. And it does look very steep, but it's not one-to-one and not even close to one-to-one. So, but I don't argue at all that it is a, that fires do come up there. And as we just saw, we saw, we all walked together, we saw where some of the burnt debris is. So the houses themselves are going to be designed beyond typical fire standards. It is kind of unbelievable to me at how low the standards for fire resilience is in Malibu. And so I heard all tonight, I keep on hearing the same thing, like, why is the code not strict? I mean, the code is to the bare minimum. So as an architect working out here for almost 30 years, we do not design to the bare minimum. So I want, and I'm happy to go into specifics about what we're doing, but I don't want to burn up too much time. I'm eating up already too much time real quick. You had mentioned the house was a few feet away from your house. This particular house is over 200 feet away from your house. The house, for the next hearing, there'll be another house right after this, we can talk about that. That's, I think, over, I think, close to 25 foot away from the edge of your house. Typical fire code is three foot from one house to the property line, three foot from the other, so a matchroom of six feet. So we're going to be just under about 25 foot from your house to the edge of our house. I think those are the major.
Easement?
Which, which one?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, we can't have a dialogue in the public here. This is, this is between you, Mr. Sorensen.
Okay, oh, the easement in the front, yes, the road easement, yes. Okay. So the property owns, it's a 20-foot easement. The road that currently comes down, she's referring to Privet Road. The center line of Privet Road, when you come off of Puercos, there is a chain link fence that is the center line of the road. So Jensen, his property goes from the center line, which is the fence, all the way over to the, the wall that is on the edge of his easement. To gain the other 10 foot, it would have to go into the owner to the ocean side of us. And he would have to extend the road to the 10-foot paper easement for, to widen that area. I can, I'll talk about what the fire department, the mitigation measures the fire department asked for. On the second house, we'll be seeing in a second, they asked us to add a hammerhead turnaround. So midway, I know you have a hammerhead turnaround at the very, very end, but now we'll be adding another hammerhead turnaround midway. So there'll be a big, open driveway right across from Cosentino's. And I know there was comments about Cosentino and Moss and him, and, or the back of Malibu, Malibu Yards where they bring back. So we'll have another big driveway with a hammerhead right across from the owner's driveway right there. And that wall gets set back, so it even widens the road in that area. So it's going to make the condition much, much better and that road much wider in the area that we can control. I think, other than just adding to the community, two beautiful homes, well-designed, thoughtful and sensitive as far as sustainability and as far as fire resilience, frankly, I believe that actually a well-designed home can act as firewalls, just like roads. The fire department will say roads act as firewalls because there's no debris to burn. Now, if you give a lot of the homes that burned, and some of our old clients in the past have lost a lot of homes where basically it's the little, the little eaves, the little wood eaves that come out with two-by-six, and then of course, the embers go into the vents or the embers drop on fortified, you know, petroleum-based roofs, whether it's bitumen torched down or whatnot. So, you know, we're doing gravel on our flat roof and then we have, we have standing seam metal on our other roofs. So, I mean, and I can go on and on about all the fortification elements that we've done if people are interested. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're going to close the public hearing. We may have questions for individuals.
I have one more disclosure item.
One more disclosure, yeah?
Yes, I guess it's the house at the end of the road. I guess it's Ms. Slupski's house. It's my former partner in the investment management business built that house. It's, but there's no relationship. It was 15 years ago or something like that.
Nonetheless, we need to allow the applicant an opportunity to respond to that disclosure if you have any comment about that one way or the other. Specifically on that note.
Why would he respond to whether?
Because you did the disclosure late, so if he, if that affects him in some way, he gets to reply. It's hard to imagine how it would, but.
I don't, I don't believe that affects us in any way. But thank you, John, for that.
Okay, so now normally, we try to get some simple, clear questions for staff out, out of the way, some really objective things, black and white, before we get into the deliberations. Skylar has a question for staff. He asked first.
I just wanted clarification on that. We said one to 10 if they have to remove the oak trees for replacement?
Yes, that is fine.
Okay. And then, does this pool require a draft line?
Can you be specific when you say a draft line?
Draft line for the fire department? Draft hydrant, sorry.
So the, the fire department has obviously reviewed and approved the proposed site plan.
Does the pool require a draft line for the fire department? Yes or no?
That has not been disclosed to my knowledge.
Sometimes it shows on the fire department approval. We'll check that for you.
Okay, thanks, Tyler. Is there?
Yes, please answer it if you have the answer.
Rich, is there any wood fencing proposed?
Let's get an answer on this.
Scott, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
I've asked. They do not require it. They encourage it and they like it. It's usually about a 15 grand upgrade to do it. But they, they haven't required it yet, to our knowledge. They might change the rules after this fire.
Any wood fencing attached to the house in the drawings? It looks like it is from the rendering.
Those are steel.
Those are steel, yes.
Those are steel? Perfect.
Those are all steel. It's like rust, it's like Corten rusticated steel.
Perfect.
John?
Good, I'm good.
John has a quick question.
It's my understanding from what you said that the driveway is 10 feet wide on the first, on this house?
Privet Road?
20 feet.
Privet Road? I mean, you're, the park that you own, is it only going to be 10 feet?
Can we pull up a slide? Is that helpful?
Should we look at my script?
Rick, do you want to pull up the, the site plan? Or the survey, either one?
What is 20? But it's 10 feet.
So Commissioner Maza, let me, so the easement's 10 foot wide at the breadth where you pull in on Puercos. However, currently, and we're going to keep it the same, there's almost an additional 10 foot that is not easement, that is effectively shared driveway, when effectively it's supposed to be 10 foot on the neighbor's property. And I'll show you here on the, just go to the, yeah, so this right here, this is about, the line is about right here for the easement. That pilaster is set back a little bit. And then this whole area, which goes up to Privet, this is all not part of the easement, but effectively is, allows a nice gracious entry for anyone driving back and forth from Puercos. So, so right here at the pinch point, it's actually closer to about 12 feet, I believe. And then the neighbor to the south, to the ocean, has a, has a, has a, has a chain link fence. And then, and then the other 10 feet is on their side, their property side.
So my, my question is, when your project is completed, how wide will the road be?
At this area, it's almost 20 feet where it comes off of Puercos. That's where all you guys pulled in, that one day where you guys parked the cars?
How wide, at its narrowest, how wide will it be?
I think, Rick, can you pull up the, can you pull up the survey or the site plan?
I believe Parker has.
I think, I think we're at 14 was one of the. I think, I think we're at 14 was one of the... Now, maybe go to the site, the survey, if you don't mind?
Right, so the, I would have to pull this up from my end if I can get access to...
Rick, we cannot hear you.
Hold on, we got the slope analysis, Chris, is that okay?
Oh, yeah, the slope analysis is good. Let's do that.
So are we hearing from Rick or Tyler?
Can you hear me currently?
Yeah.
There we go.
Okay, so, yeah, I was saying, I'm unable to share my plans right now. Do I have access to do that?
It's all right, Rick, we got this, we got the slope analysis. Does this work, Chris?
Yeah, actually, I think actually it's more like 14 is the tight, is the tightest.
Okay.
14, 14 is about the tightest. And then it's kind of interesting because then it opens up. It's hard to see from here. His chain link fence is not exactly on the line, and it kind of opens up, and then it widens in here. So I think the pinch point is around the 14, and then it opens up, it gets wider here. And then this, on the other adjacent lot, is where they're going to be the new hammerhead, so that's going to be nice and wide. And then the adjacent owner has his open driveway there. And then at the front here, where you come off of Puerto, it's almost 20 foot wide. But almost 10 foot of that is non-easement that effectively anyone drives over because there's no gate or pilaster or anything else.
So has the fire department's approved?
They have approved this. We, we had gone back and forth many times to get that, to satisfy them, and they were happy with us offering up the hammerhead midway because of the reduced width there.
Okay. Does, does the staff, I mean, does the resolution require a traffic management plan? Since you're building two houses at once, I would assume.
Rick, I wasn't aware, but I understand that's a big concern because then she needs to be able to get to her house during this. But we're not in building and safety yet. Rick, is that required, a traffic management plan?
That is typically a condition of approval. I'm just going to go ahead and pull up the conditions right now.
Yeah, okay.
It's included in conditions 35 and 36.
It's already in there?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, this is for Rick. On page 23 of your staff report, you talk about the tree. And it's my understanding that the condition, the tree now violates the... Supposedly it grew, but we're looking at it today. So I don't really care what happened in the past. Why are we referring that to an arborist when the code says you encroach, you have to replace? I'm asking him.
I was just going to offer, what if you get the applicant to agree to plant 30 trees?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. I think it's required. Is, is there a reason why the present condition isn't the dominant position?
We were cognizant of the fact that, you know, when the plans came forward back in 2021 and the subsequent studies that were done thereafter, ultimately, the, the tree back then was in compliance. However, as we know, you know, trees do continue to branch out and grow. And so the reason why we wanted to have an arborist examine it is because it's really the branches here that have grown into where some of the proposed development is, where they previously didn't show up on the plan. So we, we wanted to give an opportunity for a specialist, in case, in this case, an arborist, to look at the tree and determine if, you know, there's any way of preserving it. Obviously, where we can preserve trees, you know, that, that is the preference here. And ultimately, within the code, that, that is a preferred mechanism. So in the staff's position, that, we include this condition to allow for that.
Okay, and the ERB did recommend it. Okay, I got that.
Can we get some other commissioners in the mix here?
Well, what I'm interested in is I'd like to understand a little bit more about the drainage. Was there a full drainage study? I mean, is there, can you address that concern for your, for the neighbors?
Yeah, I, frankly, I can't fully understand what the concern was. Does she, can she restate the concern?
The concern has to do with the public street and the way it drains and dips into Cosentino's. And their thought was that they could put in some caissons and kind of level it up and stabilize it, retaining wall.
Public or private street?
It's, it's a private street. So I think your question would be, is there a nexus with that? And is there any way to...
Yes, I mean, that wall that's coming down where we're putting the hammerhead, that's getting cut back and removed. And we have a full grading and drainage plan that's being implemented where, and we have in front of the pool, we have something called like a bioswale. A bioswale means instead of putting concrete, we basically are depressing the area. So all the water comes there, fills up, and then slowly seeps into the ground. That's behind the new retaining wall that we're putting on Privet Road after the, the hammerhead gets cut in. So yes, that has been addressed. I mean, natural, natural drainage patterns for a site like that would probably be back to the Blue Line stream in the back and to the front. But because it's an ESHA, we're not allowed to use natural drainage course paths, which is a little counterintuitive to me as an environmental architect. However, yes, to answer your question, a bioswale is being put in the front to mitigate those measures. Actually, I'm sorry, I'm confusing the properties. I'm talking about 3870. Let me, we're talking about 3868. In 3868, actually, no, we have holes, big boring holes, similar to the septic, because we didn't have enough space for the bioswale in 3870. We have, so we have septic holes, pits, to handle the effluent. And then we also have a, for, for fresh groundwater, we have going, a pit that's going deep. It's obviously has to have setbacks from the effluent. But that's where all the drainage runoff, the excess drainage runoff for the 100-year massive storm that we have to design for is going to go. In typical rains in LA, as we know, we have big storms like we did the other day. So, you know, it'll go into that hole. In general, the site is going to be able to handle most of it, but all the drainage, the overflow drainage goes into a big hole. I'm sorry, I missed up the properties.
That's in drawings towards the end of the packet. Other questions, Elizabeth?
Can I make a motion?
Well, I've, I've got some more I'd like to say. In the meantime, maybe Drew, do you want to chime in here?
No, I was just wondering, did I... I was just wondering what size oak trees they are going to be obligated to plant and wanted to see if they'd be open to enlarging them. He mentioned it, that it's five gallons?
Minimum is 15 gallons, 1-inch diameter, 6 foot in height.
Okay.
So that's the minimum requirement, so...
Okay.
But you, I know you had some concerns about that.
John, you had a...
No, I want to make a motion.
Okay, I've got some, quick or...
I was going to make a motion.
All right, I've got, I've got some...
With some, maybe I would get a second, and then we could discuss it. I think we're getting there.
Do you want to let John go first, or...
I'd like to say one more thing.
Uh huh.
Okay, I just would like you to articulate the level of fire resiliency. So we know the code minimum, but you're building these structures that can possibly help save other structures by their resiliency and by being there. So could you just articulate a little bit about that?
Yeah, well, I'll start by the roofs. Typical Class A roofs, which is, they call them composite shingles, which the vast majority of buildings, it's made out of petroleum product with little granular rocks. We're not using that. That's perfectly code, it's fire-rated, it's, it's fire-rated. It meets the minimum standards. When there's big fires like this, what happens is those embers, as we all know, come down, they sit on the roof. And on a roof, you know, those are 20-year roofs. And basically, if, you know, in the very, very beginning, you have tons of granules of rock. So it, the petroleum industry has spent a lot of money to get those fire testings to work because they sell an enormous amount of composite shingles. But I can tell you, when those roofs are a little bit older, the granules fall off, and you put a burning ember on that roof, it'll seep right through, it goes into the building and ignites the building from the inside. So we're not using any asphalt composite shingles on these projects. We're doing metal roof for the pitch roof on the one. It'll be torched down the other, and we're putting a buildup of, of rock aggregate, which is not required. It creates, it's more weight, so it creates a little bit more structure to, to support. But then when burning embers come down, it doesn't go through the roof and ignite the house on fire. So that's one thing.
Thank you, Christopher, let's, let's try to keep this description tight. We're not building the house here tonight.
Well, she said she wanted more granular...
That helps, yeah, no, that's good.
I have more, but I'll, I can go on if you want me to.
You're good, okay. You want to make a motion, right?
I want to just add on there, just, I would like to require intermittent paint for all framing, if it's built with wood. And I know a lot of people aren't really familiar with that in Malibu, but you're going to probably wind up becoming a lot more familiar with that for the interior and exterior of the structure for any exposed wood. And the reason for that is that is a passive fire protection that will make your home a lot more resilient when you lose products like proper venting and things like that that are already required in the code. But when you use that kind of passive fire protection on a structure, it allows firefighters a fighting chance to save your house. And also can give it, and you have a situation where the house does not catch on fire. And if it does, the framing's reusable because it will not burn.
All right.
Can I make a motion?
That's required on the framing if there sticks.
Okay, I'm, I need to discuss some stuff. You guys can sit down, please. I'm troubled by the way that we were given this exhibit that shows how few square feet are legally buildable without restriction. I don't feel like that favors you. I think that sort of implies that you're saying that just because you can't comply with the letter of the law, that therefore we somehow don't respect the full intent of the law. And so I'm concerned about the setbacks here. We had on, on this lot, a house we heard was a couple thousand square feet. This is 5.3. If we have, counting the two together, we're at something like more than, or about five times as much development as was here before. And in this fire zone, and so, and Rick, I apologize for not having posed these to you earlier. It's been a hectic couple of weeks, as you might imagine. I would like to know the legal, legitimate basis for the variance requests. Two questions on each of the setbacks. First question being, what is the evidence that other properties in the vicinity enjoy similar relaxing of the ESHA encroachment rules? And I guess the companion to that question is, what is the evidence that granting the amount of increased encroachment would not be a special privilege for the applicant in this case? Can you compare this to the other houses in the vicinity?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, the property, for example, right at the end of Parker, oh, sorry, right at the end of Privet Road there, the private driveway, you know, that obviously is, it predates these properties, but also was built right at the start of when the city became incorporated. And that enjoys similar development standards of reduced setbacks there with that particular property, as do the majority of properties within the vicinity that, you know, really, given, especially given the narrow buildable area, allowing for these setbacks would certainly not be granting the applicant a privilege. In that sense, they are severely restricted. Of course, with the building pad area, given the slopes, this particular property has easements at the west of it as well. And so when you have that, you are severely limited in where you can build. And that's where a variance would come in for these particular setbacks.
So, so your testimony is that the, when we have in, we have both the ESHA setbacks, and then we have the yard setbacks. And on the yards setbacks, for example, we have a 50% reduction asked for in one number and a 42%. Your testimony is that the other nearby properties have similarly deep exceptions to the, the normal setbacks?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, my thought here is those rules exist for a reason. And in this fire zone, being so close to the edge, feels like maybe you split the difference. And instead of a 2,000 square foot house, or 55, 5,300, maybe this is a 4,000 square foot property. But I don't know, I'm probably not going to get much, much weight on that with you guys.
Our, our job is to review the application in front of us.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so somebody's making a motion?
I'm going to make a motion, and I'm open to amendments.
Commissioner Maza, could you make sure your mic is on?
I'm sorry, okay, number one, the Privet hedge, the, remove the hedge on Privet Road as is required. Two, 322 must be mitigated. And that means a total of 30 trees. Because, in my opinion, and I think the law is, at the point of approval, at the point of approval is when it counts, not when you apply. And now, this is the important one. This, in my opinion, this, there's no way we can certify that this meets the hazard section of our findings unless we do something more. And that is that the rear yard, side yard, inside yard fences must be six-foot masonry or cement firewalls, okay?
Or metal?
No, firewalls, metal melts. This, when the fire comes up those slopes, it's a 60, 70-foot high flame. And this, this, these fences, the fence on the rear yard must be where the three-to-one to two-and-a-half-to-one contour lines exist, which is basically right next to the, right in front of the house. The reason why, Skylar, the reason why I'm making this provision is the flames will directly hit this house if there's no firewall there. And we have required this before. There's one being built right now on Canaan, right as you enter Malibu. The fourth provision is the palm trees.
On, on the firewall, he's got a...
I mean, I just, I don't buy it for a second, what you're saying, if they're doing a freestanding metal that's described right here.
Okay, well, I, if you went on the tour on Sunday, the house next to...
I toured it for 30 days in a row, I don't need to tour anymore.
Okay, well, the house directly next door to Georgia Gold Farbs that we looked at is all metal, it melted, the house.
Yeah, because it has wood framing and a bunch of plastic inside.
No, there was no wood framing at all in that house. Cast cement, and it's...
To be, to be clear, that house...
Anyway, I'm making, I'm making the motion. It's up to you guys to accept it or not. But if you saw that house, you'd see that if, if an 80-foot flame hits it. Now, I want to point out, this lot has burned the whole lot twice in the last seven years, two times, okay? Now, and, and the flat pad has burned two times in seven years. And how many times before that, I have no idea. Okay, number four, all the palm trees must be removed, period. They, they are a danger to the downslope properties, and they are high enough to where...
I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up. I forgot to say that I noticed those when I was there, and I talked with them about removing those.
Garage doors or entrances to the, to the, to the basement must be metal. All trellises and exterior stairsway must be constructed of metal or masonry. All the furniture...
On that note, on the stairs, just to be clear, it looks like there is a stairway on the north side, on the backside of the property, Rick, that's like sort of right up over the slope? Is that stairway completely enclosed?
So that's the light well, I believe you're referring to? Or let me just pull up the plans.
Are you talking about the exit from the basement?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so there's a light well on the northwest...
Okay, so that's not...
It can't, it can't be.
That's not, that's not above ground, okay.
Okay. All, all furniture on the, on the decks must be... Well, I put in the trellises. Okay, all, all trellises and exterior stairsway must be constructed of metal or masonry. All deck furniture must be metal or removed at night.
How about removed during a red flag scenario?
Well, okay, we can get into these...
This is getting ridiculous. Are you going to tell somebody what kind of furniture they have to use? That's ridiculous, John.
It is. It is. And the fire code is one of the, the latest fire thing is one of the dangers of a house burning down.
I understand it's a danger.
You can vote against this if you wish. I want to include PR, ERB recommendation from the letter dated 10/17/24, number 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. With a landscape plan to be adjusted to meet those requirements. And that, the reason I put that in there is that for the neighbors, the trees are spread all over the lot. The ERB recommended that they be in the river channel because there's an oak woodlands and whatever, the willow woodlands or something down there. And they are farther from the house and farther from the neighbors' house.
The problem when you plant all those oak trees down in that fire funnel that was being referenced earlier is all you're going to do is create a more extreme fire situation for this house.
These are required by the, by the code.
I understand that, I'm just saying.
Okay, if you spread them around the hills, they, they're a lot closer to houses, okay? I want the, the road entrance widened to fire department specs. They have said that they are going to do that, but that's.
No, I'm sorry, they have not said.
They said the fire department, no, they said the fire department are okayed. It's, I'm saying, they can't do anything about what the fire department requires. That's my motion. It's mainly because I cannot see us, well, it's impossible to make the fire hazard declarations in the findings unless we do that.
Okay, does, do people have specific objections to anything he's included?
I would want to second it for discussion and make some friendly amendments.
Well, we need a second.
Let's hear, let's hear from Tyler.
I think I heard Commissioner Mazza that you wanted the oak trees planted closer towards the stream for the ERB recommendations, which is fine. I just want to make sure if we start planting them in the stream, there could be a jurisdictional issue. So just want to make sure clear that we're not saying to put them in the stream. We're saying to put them as close as possible to the jurisdictional boundaries of the stream.
I believe, the reason I added that was in addition. I believe that's number six or number five in their conditions.
Yeah.
So that's what's, that's what governs.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that's what we're saying. We're not saying to put them in the stream.
I'm saying what the ERB is saying, word for word.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, Skylar.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it for discussion, but I think it's important. I think that no palms, removing the existing palms is a very good thing. I think that metal fencing outside is completely fine so long as it doesn't have wood and it's thick enough metal. But to go and tell somebody that they're not allowed to have any outdoor furniture, I think, you can have outdoor furniture, it can be metal, it can be hardwood.
I didn't say that, it's not my motion.
One just phrase that they need to abide by a code.
Tell me the code that they're supposed to abide by, because I'm not aware of one. I don't think it exists.
It's not a code. It's the way to fire recommendation by the fire department that outside, that deck furniture is removed or is non-wood.
John.
That's what catches on fire in a fire. But that's my motion.
So does the format.
Vote against it if you'd want to.
So does the gallon of gasoline for your.
Drew might have a solution.
I think, I think codes are one thing, recommendations are a completely different thing.
Okay, I will, I will accept the amendment to my resolution to not require metal furniture on the deck.
I mean.
I'm accepting it. I'm going with you guys.
Okay.
Elizabeth?
Yeah, what I would say is that we would make a recommendation to the owner to not have any wood furniture and to have metal furniture. But whether they actually do it or whether we're going to enforce it, I think is.
Well, I'll give you an example. Code enforcement in Malibu doesn't exist, okay? So, I mean, that's like saying eight foot.
What I'm saying is that you can tell somebody that it is for their safety to make a recommendation.
Okay.
Okay. I do think it's important, I'm not going to require it, but I do think that you should do some research on what intermittent paint is for the house.
If you want to include that, it's not in the code. If you want to include it, I will.
I'm making, I'm just looking at the architect and saying that you should do some research on that. And I would really strongly consider that you paint all of your interior frame, all the framing of the entire house with that when it's cut on site, all the holes that are drilled, everything, if you use sticks to build. And that if you want to use wood outside for your stairs or anything, I think that you should be allowed to do that, but it has to be coded in that.
Okay, and again, a recommendation, we don't have, we don't have the foundation.
It's a recommendation, but I don't think it's fair to require the property owner that he has to make his stairs out of masonry.
We're past that.
Okay, good.
Right?
I think we have the basis for, I'm hoping unanimous, approval of this project. And I, you know, I think that the applicant seems to be very receptive to trying to do everything in his power to make this a fire resilient project.
I think we're ready to call the vote.
Good.
Rebecca, please.
So may I ask for clarification on the motion? At this point, what I captured as the amendments are the removal of the hedge on Privet Road. That mitigation for a total of 30 trees is required? I believe that you're stating that you want them to plant 30 trees to mitigate for the potential loss of three, correct?
Yes, that's required.
That rear yard and side yard fences must be constructed as a firewall with six-foot masonry or metal, where 3.5 to two-foot contour lines exist?
I'm not sure on that one.
Okay, well, okay, then what else? Remove the palm trees?
Require removal of all palm trees on site. Garage doors or entrances to the basement must be metal. All trellises and exterior stairways must be metal or masonry. You've removed the next one, and then include ERB recommendations 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, which I can pull up, but I don't have Andy yet. That the road entrance be widened to fire department specifications, and then approving the coastal development permit for construction of the new two-story single-family residence as stated in the report.
Okay.
Correct. That's the motion.
We need to verify that the applicant's okay with these provisions.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
No, we don't.
I'd like to, I'd like to know.
You don't, applicants do not have to appeal.
Whether they, whether they have, we have to or we don't have to. You know, you've got people who've designed these projects. I would like to know from the applicant if they're comfortable with these proposals.
Would you guys mind clarifying what those ERB recommendations were that you said 2 through 6?
I'll read them to you. They're on, I'll have to find them.
I got them here, Commissioner. 2 through 6, right? So 2 is oak replantings be placed closer towards the stream. Maintain the walnut and oak tree saplings. Remove invasive species. Incorporate grassland mitigation. And remove a large existing hedge of Cape Honeysuckle.
Okay. Which, those are fine with me.
Yeah, which is, was number one, so that's redundant. Okay, I don't know if you do redundancy, but that's what it is, okay.
Also, going into the road, you said to the fire department standards, we have approved plans from the fire department?
That's what that motion means.
Okay, so it doesn't mean I need to go back to, okay. And then the other clarification was the wall that you mentioned, the masonry wall?
Yes.
Do you mean like add a masonry wall, or if we have one, make sure it's masonry?
No, it is required, it's a firewall.
Required. Now, would I have to go back into planning and go through the process again? Or is this a condition of approval?
No, this is, this is the resolution that's approved. If it passes, it's approved.
I don't think that you should require him to put a six-foot wall around his entire house that's masonry.
It's not all, it's not around the entirety. It's on the slope side, and it's something that we have done in the past.
I'm concerned about wildlife access.
Wildlife is not, Wildlife Code says you may not enclose more than a quarter of an acre. This is only on one side.
One side.
Where the cliff goes down, straight down.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Can I just mention that in your original motion, you asked for this to occur on both the rear and side yard?
Yeah, where the, that's where the slope is. Okay, and if you pull up the.
Mike.
If you pull up the slope analysis, you'll see it's not the, it's the, not the side yard I'm saying. It's the, where's the slope analysis? Oh, I got to find this, hang on. You'll see the slope analysis turns to.
The north side.
Okay, whatever you want to call that, wherever it's not green, it's that blue, is 2.3 to 1, or whatever it is. Just the two, whatever I said. Three to one to two and a half to one. Now, if that's only one side, the other side is flat.
At a certain point, John, the reason why this process takes so freaking long is because you consistently drag this stuff out forever.
I'm not dragging it out, you're the one that's dragging it out. I made a motion.
We don't need the ad hominem process.
Okay, I just want to ask, are you okay with a masonry wall behind your property on the slope?
My only concern about that is, you know, on a steep slope, you know, built properties, you have to put deepened caissons. I don't know how, the linear footage of what you're requiring, but I know the cost generally is $500,000 a linear foot.
It's the exact same fence that you have on your plan.
Okay, it's right on the edge of that slope.
It's about two feet from your house.
I have a recommendation. They make products that, that are basically concrete slats that, a slot wall, a concrete wall that's made out of slats. You know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
Would that suffice for you guys? And that's only about four?
That's masonry. That's, that's, it's either concrete or masonry. That's what the resolution says.
And those, those are fairly reasonable.
If you guys are all in agreeance with that as a condition of approval, then that's fine.
As long as, as long as that qualifies, I'm fine with it.
All right, we're there, I think. Right? Rebecca, we're clear on everything?
Timber Creek, it's called.
I believe so.
Okay.
Would you like me to call a question?
Yes, please. Call the vote, please.
From a planner's perspective, if I may, just to specifically pin down the wall, the fence that we're talking about, on the fence and wall plan, so that's sheet A 1.4. It's, there's a fence behind the northeast corner of the residence, and it's WG G1 is the note. So that's a five-foot fence to act as a pool enclosure. Is that the fence that's being referenced here that should be masonry?
No, what we're referring to is on the, the, it specifically said.
That is it. That is it?
Yeah.
And we're talking about the north side, the side that's on the slope?
I gave, I gave the, in the resolution, does it say where the slope changes to two and a half, one to? I can't read this. Is that in the resolution? That's the location of the fence.
So, yeah, that particular fence does follow the property line along the east there. So it does go down what's effectively the rear yard there, as well as the.
We're just talking about the north side on the slope, that the fire hazard slope, not the east side where the terrain is relatively level from one lot to the other.
Rebecca, can you read, read that resolution? Because it should have the location being, and basically it's where it's that magenta color and the blue color. That's, it should be, I have it here somewhere. It's on the three-to-one and through two-and-a-half-to-one slope. At the edge of that, that's what it should say. Rear yard masonry or cement wall on the edge of the slope, 3.1 to two-and-a-half to one, is required to be installed. Wherever that slope is, that's where it's required. That's where the fire is coming out. The flat part next to the other house has nothing to do with this.
Tyler, WG 1 on the north side of WG 1 only.
Yeah, can we just say the wall on the north side of the property at the edge of the three-to-one to two-and-a-half-to-one slopes?
Well, I don't know what north is. Wherever you have that slope.
That captures it, right?
Yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing that I think is that, so just so everyone's aware, there is a requirement obviously of five-foot fire department access around the perimeter of the building there. So I just want to make sure that wherever that wall is to be located, that it does maintain that five-foot access around full of five to one.
Okay, you can put that in the resolution if you want.
Is it not, I believe it's drawn that way already, right?
It is.
Yeah, you can't have a fire access on a three-to-one slope.
So that's there. Vote, please.
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and with that, we have Groundhog Day and do the same thing all over again on the adjoining property.
Commissioner Hill? It's me, hi. The applicant for item 4A would like to continue that item to work with a neighbor. Yes, I don't know if he wants to address the commission with that request before we get into 4C.
He just signaled one minute. Do we want to hear from 4A for one minute?
Well, we can let his, let him go, yes. Yes, I would, I'd like to let people go.
Mr. Schmitz, 4A.
No, wait, 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 wait. He has to recuse himself.
You're in the item. Yeah, come back, come back.
Well, he can't vote on this.
Come back shortly.
I don't know, let's ask our attorney. Does he have to recuse himself?
If, if you're just making a motion to put it to a date certain, no. He, yeah.
All right, this better be good.
Real quick, you can sit and listen to it, you can't vote on it.
Do we have to close the other, oh, we can listen and then vote later? I mean, do we have to close the?
No, just, just let him, no, there, nothing's open. He's just going to talk and you guys are going to make a motion to move this to another date.
Ad hoc comment from the floor, please.
Commissioners, through the chair, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicant. I have been conferring with your staff. They believe that they can bring this matter back on March 17th with all the noticing requirements for the supplemental staff report. The reason for this is we have had ongoing discussions with our next-door neighbor, the Addams. An agreement has not been reached yet, that they have specific concerns as it pertains to some pool equipment and other things. They certainly are entitled to time to take a look at the supplemental materials which we have given to them. It's always wise, wherever possible, to see if you can assuage concerns and have peace in our time. So that is the basis for this. We were prepared to go forward tonight, but we think it's prudent to give it until the 17th so that our neighbors can take a look at the supplemental materials which we've given to them.
Okay, thank you, Don. Ken Erlich, you look like you have, are you, are you happy with that? Or do you have an opposing view on this?
30 seconds.
30 seconds.
It is a rare occasion where I agree with Mr. Schmitz, and I do agree with everything he said. I would add, the one following comment is that if this commission can in fact hear the matter tonight, we're here. Our neighbors are here as well. So we would prefer, if it's possible, to get it in tonight, fine. If it's going to be impossible to get it in tonight because there's one more hearing to go, or questionable, then we agree with the brief continuance.
Well, they are asking for the continuance.
Understood. I'm just giving you our position, and the commission can make its own decision. And I'm giving you the input and our thoughts. Thank you.
So this is a bit ad hoc, but how do we want to handle this?
We could hear it tonight.
Let's hear from Elizabeth first.
So, you know, as much as I hate continuances, I feel that when they're requested, they initially should be granted. And I would, I would agree to continue.
Any other views here?
My view is that it's 9:30 now, and if we're going to spend another hour on the next-door neighbor's project, it's not going to be getting heard till 11 o'clock.
We're getting close anyway.
Exactly.
So do we make a motion? Can we make a motion?
Motion to continue, yeah, sure, we can amend.
So what was the date to continue to?
We can amend the, our agenda tonight.
So we're going to continue 4A to March 17th?
I'll second that.
Date certain?
Yes, a date certain would be preferable, and we do appear to have room in that meeting. That is the commission's will. And please remind me who just made the first and second on that?
Skylar made the motion. Skylar made the motion, I seconded it.
Would you like me to call the roll on that chair?
Please.
Commissioner Peake, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
I abstain.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Sorry that you guys had to come down, but, you know, in the interest of process, let's get it right.
We're going to meet at the Irish pub?
Since this is a continued item, it would, Rebecca, since this is a continued item, it would be a 4A or 4B item?
It already was a 4A, so, yeah.
It will again be a 4. It will again be a 4A or possibly a 4B. I believe there is another continued item on that agenda, so it would be one of those two. The other item has also been continued more than once. So that will be the decision of the planning director in terms of scheduling.
All right, let's go to 4C, shall we? Thank you, guys. Sorry to everybody who came and waited. We'll get this right when we get to it. So we're now on to 4C. That's you again, Rick, right?
That is correct. Thank you, Chair Hill. Good evening again, planning commissioners. I'll try and get through this as quickly as possible here. So the item before you involves coastal development permit Woolsey Fire Number 21-001 with variance 24-017, minor modification Number 21-017, and site plan review permit Number 21-029 and 24-012. The application is for construction of a new two-story, single-family residence with attached garage and associated development. It also includes a variance for fuel modification and existing proposed development encroachment into environmentally sensitive habitat areas and their buffers, a minor modification for the setback reductions to both front and both side yards, as well as site plan reviews for height over 18 feet and proposed development encroachment into steep slopes. Next slide, please. So we know where this is located. It's ultimately the central parcel here along Privet Road there, flanked by 3874, which has the home on it there in the aerial to the east, and then the property we just examined, 3868, there to the west. Next slide, please. So existing conditions, as we know, there's remnants of the former residence that was located on here, notably an abandoned swimming pool, as well as the retaining wall there at the front, shows in the image, which runs along the southern property line there, right next to Privet Road. Next slide, please. So overview of the project description, this is construction of a 7,372 square foot single-family residence, two-car garage included, OWTS, pool and spa, retaining walls, and then minor landscape, hardscape, as well as, of course, outdoor lighting. Next slide, please. So as noted before, there's several discretionary requests involved with this, notably a variance, of course, for the existing and proposed development encroachment within Escher and the associated buffers. Two site plan reviews, one obviously for the steep slope encroachment, one for the roof height there up to just under 24 feet, and then the minor modification for both front yard setback and reduction to both side yards there. Next slide, please. So we can see, of course, similar issue here with slopes to the north. You have the existing building pad area there where the proposed development would be located, just south of that, where you can see the pool there. There's obviously some degree of steep slopes there, flanking down to Privet Road. Next slide, please. Just looking here at the site plan review permit request, ultimately, this is for the steep slope encroachment there at the front of the property. This is ultimately for the hammerhead widening of the driveway, so you can see that little portion of magenta there that's highlighted and just shows exactly what's being proposed there. This is obviously for the benefit of fire department access. The code does allow for a site plan review permit to be given where the slopes are less than 2 and 1/2 to 1, and a little more than 3 to 1, in which case we have that situation going on here. So it is allowable without the need for a variance. Next slide, please. So as noted, the minor modification request does involve three setback reductions, so the southerly front yard setback there, there would be a 50% reduction, which is permissible with this minor modification, and then 20% reductions to both the west and east side yard setbacks. And again, that's relative to the small buildable area here as a result of Escher, and then obviously slopes there to both the north and south of the property. Next slide, please. An overview of the development area, as noted before, where you have a property that has Escher on it or is within 100 feet of Escher, there is a limit to 10,000 square feet there. You'll notice that the fire department access there shaded in red. Portions of that around the property do go outside of that. However, those are not being developed. It's basically just a sort of natural hardscape in the form of DG that will allow that fire department access. This was previously discussed with the planning director and applicant, and has been done so in previous projects in the past. Next slide, please. Looking at the Escher and the protected trees here, you'll notice that the proposed development area shown in the hatched orange there, that is located outside of the protected zones of all those surrounding oak trees. You will notice, though, that a portion of it does encroach there within that 100-foot stream buffer. That is existing development in the form of an existing retaining wall. The applicant is not proposing any new development within that particular Escher buffer. However, as we know, there's also Escher buffers associated with the on-site woodland there, so the proposed development would fall within that 100 feet there from the Escher woodland. Again, it's basically unavoidable, given that this is really the only portion of the lot that can be developed, and even if you could develop it north of the Escher there, it would still fall within steep slopes. Next slide, please. So just looking at the site plan here, just to give us a lay of the land, you can see the driveway here at the southwest corner, two unenclosed spaces provided there, as well as, of course, the proposed two-car garage there at the west portion of the proposed build. Next slide, please. I'll quickly get through these floor plans if we need to go back to them. First floor plan there, next slide, please, as well as the second floor. You'll notice there are trellis elements included with this, along with balconies and a deck area there on the upper floor. Next slide, please. Again, roof plan here if we need it for any kind of reference point. Following slide, please. And then a look at the elevations. Next slide, please. And then, if I can have the next one, please, this section basically just provides us with an overview of how the proposed building will meet the height requirements there. It's a flat roof, so it's entitled to up to 24 feet with the site plan review permit request. They're proposing just a couple inches underneath that, of course, with a chimney projecting above, which is allowable as a architectural projection above that. Next slide, please. Looking at the landscape plan here, you'll notice that the applicant is proposing primarily succulents here, as well as shrubs, but it's fairly moderate landscaping that's being proposed here. In the southeast corner here, which is at the bottom left of the slide, you'll notice in yellow the bioswell, which was previously referenced by Mr. Sorenson. So this ties into any questions on drainage for this particular property, which we can always revisit. Next slide, please. An overview of the fuel modification. Again, I don't believe, I need to belabor this here. We know that the property is obviously subject to that. That's why the Escher is being impacted primarily here, as well as the existing retaining wall. Next slide, please. Overview of the grading, essentially just noting here that it's compliant with the code where 1,000 cubic yards non-exempt grading are allowable. The applicant is proposing a little over 500 cubic yards of non-exempt grading. There's no previously associated grading with this property per the LCP, so this is how things would remain. For this particular property, there would be no additional grading added to that as a cumulative. Public correspondence, essentially it's exactly the same as was noted with the previous project, obviously with them being immediately adjacent to one another. The concerns of the various...
Rick, Rick, I think we can take that as read if it's virtually the same, and I think we'll be hearing from some, right?
Yep. That was me. The summary ultimately, recommendation is for planning commissioners to provide directions to staff to bring back a resolution consistent with the planning commission's decision, or consider the draft resolution attached to the staff report, which is Resolution Number 25-36, approving the project's as condition. That concludes my presentation. I will be available for questions. Thank you.
All right, so before we open the public hearing, do we have any disclosures? Let's start at this end.
I did a site visit with the architect and the client, and took a look around, looked at any issues, and that's what I have to disclose.
Same as before?
I visited the project with Craig, same as before, and my former partner built the house directly next door.
Same as before?
We didn't visit it with each other. We were there. Anyway, I noticed a story pole setback 5 feet from the edge of the steep slope on the north side again. I asked about, this is one, is different, why is there not a demolition permit in the packet for the existing foundation and structure that are on the, existing on the property? I guess this is, now we're evolving from disclosures to quick questions. Does Rick or Tyler, do you know why?
So my understanding of demolition permits, and I understand it is a little bit fluid, but this can obviously be added on, but typically demolition permits are associated with above-grade structures.
As there is here.
Yeah. Well, there isn't, right? There's just foundation system, right, Rick?
It's primarily foundations. There are some wall features that projected the northern edge of the building pad, associated with the existing retaining wall.
I think they would maybe be associated with previous windows, probably, right?
What I can say is it's not an exact science, it's not an exact consistency. It's usually, as Rick mentioned, applied to full structure demolition or partial demolition. If you want to add it, the actual demolition permit is a discretionary request, so it's discretionary item, meaning you got to make findings, and it's not attached to this application tonight.
Yeah, I don't know what the, you know, the implications are one way or the other. It just seems like normally we would have one and we don't here now, and I don't know, does that...
I will agree with you, Chair, that it's not consistently applied. Just internally, we apply it to mostly demo of the full structure or partial demo of the primary structure.
Okay, well, with that, let's, having done disclosures, let's have the presentation. And I think...
I have a question for staff, or should we wait?
Wait, wait till they, and I would just suggest, you know, there's a lot that sort of overlaps what you've presented on the other property, if we could be as concise as, but obviously you have 15 minutes again, and you can reserve time, and we have two other speakers in the building, and probably anybody online?
Cards?
I do.
No, there's no raised hands.
Okay. So, Mr. Sorenson, tell us about this one.
Yes, I think I'll try to be brief, considering we've addressed a lot of different things. The fuel modification, very similar to the last. The hammerhead turnaround, as Rick mentioned, there is a small slice of, I know we call them steep slopes, but they are, the slope to be exact is a 3 to 1 to 2 and 1/2 to 1, and that's where the hammerhead turnaround. We worked with the fire department to try to avoid it, but there is just, it's like right there behind that existing retaining wall, so that's getting removed, that you guys saw, the block wall that's existing previously, that's getting removed, and that's where that slope is. Height, same thing, no one's in the back, not blocking ocean view. I know the neighbors to the right and to the left, no view blockage as well regarding going up to the 24-foot flat roof, 2310, I think we had. I think I can just hold the rest until, because I think it's self-explanatory. Maybe, Rick, you want to just, let's go to the one side, at least I'll show the rendering of the house. So there you go. And so I assume similar comments, but yeah, why don't I save the rest of my time to discuss?
Thank you. So first we have Julie Hoffman, followed by Alina Sitkavetsky.
So I wanted to talk about a few things. One, you brought up the idea of privilege and about setbacks, and I do believe that Reggie had to comply with a certain setback next to Tony Ozzy's house, so that might, you might want to look into that, so that there's consistency in terms of rulings. Then the other house that Gaia Zione built is now owned by Sean and Marta Wade, and they are in Texas right now, so they haven't been able to see the story poles, but they said that when they get back, they wanted to see the story poles. So then the Blue Line Stream, when the MRCA had, after the Woolsey Fire, there was a lot of debris of all the structures that were the footprint of the old pig farm that came downstream and clogged the exit under PCH, so that the Coastal Jefferson came and he looked at it, he walked down into that area and contacted the Coastal Commission and Fish and Game, because all of that debris just clogged, wouldn't go out to the sea. And who was responsible for removing that debris? And I think that when Des Coyle and Amare Bush owned that property, they had a little bobcat that went down twice a year and cleared everything, and so that there was ability for the fire department to go down and fight the fire from there. But now, apparently, the fire department didn't even know there was a road there because it was so overgrown, it hadn't been maintained. The bobcats hadn't been coming in like they did when Des Coyle owned it, and so therefore they had to take their fire equipment down a very steep cliff to go into that canyon. So the neighbors would want to request respectfully that that area where you're going to now plant 30 more trees really be kept as fire-safe as possible, and a bobcat goes down that road, and that there's never a gate that stops. If they live in one house and sell the other, that there's not a gate that stops the fire department from going down there and keeping that whole gully clear. And then the fourth subject is the idea of coming into Puercow from PCH. That's where the drainage problem is. It's right opposite a property now owned by Louis Stromeyer, whose plans are probably in front of you guys soon. So you'll see the road buckles, you have to walk the road. You see, you walked the area with the applicants, you didn't walk the area with the people who've been living there for 30 years. Thank you.
Two, three minutes, thanks. Maybe later, we'll let everybody. Alina?
Commissioners, my concern is still the easement. I understand that the architect allowed for a good hammerhead turn for each property that goes off of Puercow Canyon, and also that is closer to my home, that is a very narrow easement. I want to highlight it again. My concern is every single neighbor on our canyon has a security gate. It's an isolated canyon, it's not like a nice neighborhood where everybody looks... It's not like a nice neighborhood where everybody look after each other. It's a little bit scary there at night, so everybody wants a security gate. So my concern is if, let's say, the property changes hands or later on the applicant chooses to install security gates, then the hammer, what will happen with the hammerhead, you know, space? We'll need the U-turn, that little narrow space needs a U-turn. Because a dump, you know, a trash truck goes down, and then they have to back up, all the way backing up up the still, the stiff slope, because they cannot make a U-turn or somehow maneuver to go up. Now, what's, what we mentioned with the property, right? The third property that also shares the easement. They have like a little driveway as well, like a little turnout area, little parking area. But once it's closed off with the security gate that I mentioned before, that area again becomes a very narrow trap. So how can we make sure that whatever is planned in a nice way now is not becoming a trap in the future? Can we somehow affect the projects the way that is impossible to block off this maneuver space on the easement later when, let's say, somebody feels differently? So that's my concern, and please help me to address this and maybe find solutions that would help us all. The applicant to get his projects passed through, because we do want neighbors. I'm not here to prevent him from building. I'm here as a neighbor, and there will be my children and his children living there to make sure that we are safe maneuvering, going back, or we're not hit approaching it from Puercow Canyon Road when we have to dive down towards our homes. We're not hit in our faces with an Amazon truck or something that is backing off and up the easement. That is my concern. So thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you, Alina. Okay, so we have no online speakers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we, we have option to rebut if you have anything you need to add in rebuttal?
So those are both good concerns. Thank you for bringing those up. I just want to address, I think the main thing that I was hearing was the, there's a, there's a road on the back of, it's actually on 3868, the property that was just approved. It goes all the way down. Yeah, I think it was just a by-road, it's not on the paper. It doesn't, there's no easement that shows that it exists. But it does, and someone cut it years ago. So yeah, we're not going to be, the oak trees are not going to be proposed in that area for a bobcat to drive down there. But I don't know what anyone thinks about it. I don't know what to speak on it. I mean, it exists, we weren't planning on removing it. It obviously, you know, Jensen's done a good job over the last five years to maintain the property, but you know, there's some overgrown growth. So obviously, once it's developed, there'll be more maintenance that happens. But he does have a gardener coming there, and so it has been maintained to a certain degree. But I don't know if that comes up for a discussion item or what. Regarding the other item, mentioned the hammerhead. It's a very good point that you made. We weren't proposing a gate, but of course, who knows what, you know, the future holds? I mean, you know, usually the fire department, when a gate comes in, the gate would have to go for a permit and to get approved. I've done many gates before where we have to get them approved. Just like your property, there's a Knox box that the fire department requires if there is a gate proposed and to be built. And so then the Knox box, in the event of an emergency, the Knox box can be accessed. But we're not proposing a gate, so it's kind of a moot point at this point. But I understand she's talking about concerns of the future. But you know, that air, that particular area of the road, that existing wall where it is, it's actually encroaching into the easement. So that whole portion for the 70-foot length is getting demolished of that wall. So that wall won't be there. So you'll have, you're going to have a nice wide area for both the Malibu property down below, the Malibu, and then your property to get in. Again, I know those Amazon trucks, they're everywhere, they park everywhere. They're kind of hindrance to all of us, but you know, that's the convenience of life. So maybe drones are going to come at some future date. But I don't know what to say. As far as trash trucks, you will have more width there. So trash trucks, you know, will be able to come. Obviously, you know, they service your property, so they just do what they need to do now. And with two more properties, the trash for the other one will be up high. So that will, almost a trash truck for that will be at Puercow. But the trash down here, for this lot that we're talking about, will have more width. So yeah, unfortunately, trash trucks, you know, they can do a hairpin turn or they can back up. But we are widening the road in that area. That hammerhead is going to actually alleviate a lot of pressure right in that area. And that was the condition that the fire department put on us to give us their approval.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. I think I'd like to raise a couple of issues first, because I, based on what I feel the appetite here might be. This one is different than the other one in that, or maybe it is, in that it appears to block several PVDs, based on the photos that we have, including at PDF page 249. I don't know, staff, if you have that photo? And also, from the scenic highway from PCH, the story poles stand out against the skyline that, in a manner that suggests that this would be subject to the hillside ordinance. I don't know why the other one didn't show that, but the photos on this one look more dramatic. Drew?
I have a question for Chris, that contains that. Chris, can you come back up?
PDF 249 and 251.
Are we talking about attachment three?
Have you guys, was there any, does anyone have a primary view designation through this property that's going to be blocked by the property?
No.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, staff.
Okay, you verify that with staff. And then while staff's looking that up, I had a question. On the plans, you guys have some operational skylights on the project? Will those be, are those incorporated into the maximum height? So that, you understand my question?
Oh, do they go beyond the height?
Yeah.
That's a very good question, actually. You know, usually they just crack open four inches.
But just their closed, their closed elevation, are they going to be above the 24?
Uh, no.
You can't even open them.
Yeah, well, they, they show them as being operational.
Right, there's just, I think we just have a two out of the, out of all of them to be operational. Again, that's kind of environmental thing, so those open up. All the hot air flows out of the building and brings in cool air off the pools.
I was just wondering--
But you're talking about height.
Regards to the height, the height of the house.
Tyler can answer.
They're not going beyond the height limit, no.
Tyler has the graphics here. You've got page 249, and then there's 251 also.
So Chair Hill, this one right here, I can, I know these projects pretty well, too. I'm actually working on that Puercow project.
And I'm looking on like the bottom photo here.
Yeah, that's an old photo. This PVD was taken like in 2012, so that's an old development in this PVD.
So those poles are not relevant to--
That's not this project. Yeah, this is like 2012, because--
What about 251? Is that also similar?
Those are over 1,000 feet, too.
Yeah, like the one with the car on the upper left.
Rick, do you know the age of these photos? I'm not familiar with this one.
I'm just looking at the packet right now. It seems unfortunately, some of the photos appear to have a little jumble, but most of these were done a number of years ago. PVD, so are we looking at--
Well, these, the others was a PVD. This is distinguished in being a shot from the highway. So maybe that was taken more recently as part of the packet, either by you, or maybe by Philip? I don't know.
But that's not our project.
Yeah, these are old photos, Chair.
At least 10 years old. The EV in the picture there?
Can we get to the place where we're making the motion?
Tyler, that's, those aren't our project.
Those are not your project.
Rick attached-- Those are view quarters from previous projects.
Including the shots from PCH?
Yeah, these ones look old, too, yeah. So they're just existing in previous PVDs from 2012 that were old development at that time.
Okay.
Can I ask a question on attachment three? There's a red line that sticks up from the ridge. Doesn't look like it's, is that some version of a story pole, or what is that?
I believe you're referring that there's an arrow that points out--
It's an arrow.
Yeah.
What's it pointing to?
It's pointing down, so I was trying to, you know, show where the story poles are, because they kind of blend in there, that they're obviously--
Oh, I got you, I got you. Okay, and, but this is viewable from the highway, so it's, it's, it's got the color. It can't be white, right? Earth tone, is that provisioned in our resolution?
The APG is proposing a dove gray, which will blend essentially with the, or the surrounding environment.
It's a question of whether we want to add a condition.
No, is the, the question is, Tyler, is the, is the standard color condition in our resolution? It says it can, you have to be earth toned?
It should be, let me, let us double check real quick. But yeah, just in case they do change the color, we can add that.
Maybe while he's looking at that. Renika, maybe you could address, what happens about drain clearance in ESHA? Because theoretically, these guys shouldn't be driving down there in a bobcat. But on the other hand, Public Works has to get in there and clear the drains. How does that work? In other words, I think this is Public Works responsible, or Caltrans, maybe.
Well, the question isn't the drain. Drain is Public Works.
Right.
This is a blue line stream.
Right.
It may not be cleared, period. You need Fish and Game's permission.
Right, but the drain has to be cleared, so how do you do that if you can't?
The city's in charge of that, not them.
You guys might, I think you might be talking about two different things. I think she's talking about the road, right? And then the blue line stream is on our property.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because she was talking about clearing the brush in the blue line stream area. You can't do that.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay? You can have a road there, but you can't use it.
Right, right.
Yes, that would require a stream, but alteration agreement from Fish and Wildlife.
Right.
So unfortunately, if the blue line stream, Fish and Game is in control, nobody can go down there with a bulldozer or anything and do anything.
Okay, so Skylar--
I'd like to make a motion, yeah. I have one question, one item on the, that may be in this motion is, are you undergrounding the utilities?
Yeah, we're playing, no, go ahead.
My, I spoke with one of the neighbors about undergrounding the utilities. Typically with that, you need their, you need an easement from SCE, and then they have to agree to it, because I believe the easement goes onto their property. So on my end, more than happy to underground in terms of whether the neighbor agrees to it or not is--
And if they were undergrounded, would you remove the telephone pole?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion then.
I want to clarify regarding the condition for the exterior treatment of the building. I don't see that condition, but we'd be happy to add that to the resolution.
Add that, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to make a motion?
No, you can make the motion. I just want to be very clear that you can't require them to underground the power if the pole is on somebody else's property.
I'm not, I'm saying if it got undergrounded, then remove the telephone pole.
It's important to also know that the electrical service of each house is going to dictate whether it can be fed even overhead, if that's possible. The likelihood that a modern house of this size is getting fed overhead is, in Malibu, is fairly nonexistent at this point.
Well, I'm going to take that out then, because I'm not going to bother with it. Okay, so the motion is, and these are, Rebecca, basically the same motions as before on the prior option, thing, that the rear yard, the, whatever we said, northern or rear yard or wherever the three to one and two and a half to one slope is, there's a six-foot masonry or cement wall. Number two, and this, I assume that the palm trees look like they were on both properties. So I'm going to put in the palm trees must be removed. If they're on the wrong property, it's moot.
Remove any palm trees?
Yeah, okay. Garage door, metal, metal or fireproof material.
Same, same--
Same condition, all trellises or stairways must be metal or masonry. ERB, this is different. ERB recommendations on the letter dated 8/15/24 are number one, two, three, and four. I can read those if you want. And we don't need to add a demolition permit, so that's the motion.
I would add as a friendly or to consider, would you want to put in a condition to say no security gate in future?
I can't do it, it's not on his property.
It's on the other property, you're right.
So that's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any other comments or any other, okay?
Roll call, please. Turn roll, please.
May I please confirm with Principal Planner Eaton that he feels confident that he has captured the amendments requested or also our contract planner, Rick Caswell?
The, the, okay, I'll just, to make it simple, the ERB letter is attachment five. And the recommendations are maintain walnut saplings. Walnut saplings must, must be protected.
You don't need to read it. I think, I think we're all on board.
Does the applicant understand what the conditions from the ERB he is referencing are?
Is it, is it the same as the other property?
Well, basically, except a lot of them are eliminated. Let's see, I'll just read real quick.
We're not removing any oak trees on this property.
Remove the, retain, maintain the walnut saplings. Walnut saplings and coast oaks must be protected. Woodland, woodland must be restored, same as the other one. And one, two, three, and four is remove invasive species.
Yeah, that's what you guys recommend.
Okay.
Yeah, let's take a 10-minute break, and we'll come back for the--
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get everything down. So Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Riddick?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I make a motion, we adjourn in honor of the fire victims. And Penny.
And with that, this motion, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
And just as a--
Welcome, Rebecca.
As a reminder, with the three commissioners who were sworn in as new appointees based on their council members' terms, please see me after the meeting for signatures. I also have packets for Comish, Vice Chair Peak and Commissioner Riddick.